Okay, we're gonna open up this meeting at six thirty-six. This meeting is being audio and videotaped. It is on channel nine and it will be repeated. It's also gonna be uploaded to YouTube. Could we all stand please for the pleasure of allegiance and please remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the passing of David, A. David O'Connell, Gilbert Sousa, Robert B. Marshall, and Joan Whittle Maderas. David O'Connell was a longtime employee at Morton Hospital and he was in charge of the lab. And I remember my son's senior year, he actually arranged an internship for my son at Morton Hospital, and that was the field my son went into. Joan Whittle Maderas was a librarian in the town of Dayton. I think she was here, probably, I'm gonna guess, twelve, thirteen years ago. But in their memory, I would ask a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our condolences to their friends and family.
Okay, why don't we do public input? I believe, Mr. Perry, you wanted to do, or was it Dean? Sorry, Mr. Cronin. Why don't we use the microphone because I'm told the public can't hear anybody in the audience? Thank you.
In regards to the new committee that people wanna form, just had a few questions and trying to get a grasp of the procedure and what you're looking for. So I'd like to start off with a basic question of what was the reasoning behind forming this committee?
I can answer that. There was an agenda item on, at our last meeting, to change the name of the Board of Selectment to Select Board. And then Mrs. Aaronstein mentioned something about the possibility of changing some elected positions, treasurer, tax collector, to appointed positions. So as we kinda toss those two items around, I suggested that we form a town governance committee made up of residents that the Board of Selectment could act as resources to, but the board itself would not serve on it. So that's why we reached out to the public.
So we're gonna discuss later on, it's an agenda item, as to exactly what we're looking for, this committee to be looking at.
So you have, you have goals, objectives?
We have goals. We're gonna give them three or four specific goals that we want them to...
Because I think, I'm only talking for myself right now, excuse my voice, but I just, I don't know which direction you're going. Is it, is it the form of government, town meeting government? Is it just pieces within the government? Because I think what threw me off base was the appointed positions being turned over to elective, of how this...
It's the other way around.
How this, yeah, how this all generated together. It just didn't seem like the same mix as Select Board. It seems like there's, there's two different directions there. And I could be wrong, but this is why I wanted to get some kind of explanation of which way you were going and which goals, objectives were...
Yeah, there's several items that we want them to look at, and they may be not necessarily related. I feel very strongly that the Board of Selectment should be changed to the Select Board. Other towns have done it. I think it's appropriate. It's 21st century, it's ninety-nine years since women have been allowed to vote, and I think it's about time that we change that. But there's also other issues, but we don't have the final say on any of this. The Board of Selectment don't have final say. It's gonna be the, the people in the town are gonna be having the final say as to what, whether positions are gonna be appointed or remain elected, whether we become, remain the Board of Selectment or the Select Board. So they'll be coming back with reports to us and letting us know what they're, what they've concluded, and we'll be bringing this to the town.
Because the research that this committee will do, I just want them, you know, have tunnel vision, you know, and just go in the direction they wanna go, you know? Sure, you have to come up here though.
You can both stand up there if you want.
Yes, Dean and I had some discussions and, about this, and sort of put some things together that, you're gonna be discussing this certainly. Just some thoughts on, made up something, some thoughts on perhaps how this could start down the road. And I, I'm gonna start with a little quote, if I may, from, it's gonna sound silly, but Winnie the Pooh. It says, he said, "Before beginning a hunt, it is wise to ask someone what you are looking for before you begin to look for it." So with that said, we had talked, Dean and I had talked a little bit, and just would certainly like to be part of that governance committee, but with that said, you know, there's certainly you need a purpose, goals and objectives, and what's the final product gonna look like? Tasking document should be approved by a vote of the Board of the Select, of Board of Selectment. And the study committee members, we feel, should be interviewed and approved by a vote of the Board of Selectment, simply because this is not gonna be a lightweight committee by any means. And it shouldn't be the first seven people through the door. And I know there are many people out there in the town that are happy to serve the town, but this is, perhaps there should be a little bit of background in how government works and a good background in that area and how towns work. But then, again, each and every member should be approved by the Board of Selectment to give validity to when those members perhaps go out to another town and say, gee, you know, we're looking at this, looking at that, what have you done? And oh, by the way, I was put on this committee by a vote of the Board of Selectment, again, for validity. And then finally, the study committee should report and take direction from the Board of Selectment. And now, those are our thoughts, and to put that document in front of you, sort of as a thoughts from somebody that wasn't sitting in the inner circle at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I did just wanna comment on this. I appreciate both the gentlemen coming in and giving us their opinions. My impression, and maybe this was just what I was thinking, was this was the procedure we did plan on taking. So we do have later in the agenda, like a draft of the charge. Those aren't finalized by the Board of Selectment yet, and I think at a future meeting, we will think about, start discussing who will be appointed to the committee, so...
Really great minds.
But I just wanted, we're on the same page, absolutely.
I think when, when I was talking about a governance committee also, when we, when we started to talk about different subjects, I said, the reason it's important to get townspeople involved and the Board of Selectment sort of sit back, give you your charge and let you do your job, whoever's gonna do this, this is a major change in town government. And Mrs. Aaronstein explained the process. Do you wanna just say...
Sure, absolutely.
What is involved in this as far as...
Right.
If a change is gonna be made in governance of the town.
So, exactly. So this, this study aspect of this committee is really the focal point. The selectmen did ask me to generate a handful of items to be discussed, and as I did that, there, again, who said heavy lifting? That's absolutely true. So my first thought is that it needs to be a group of people who are familiar with how things work, however, are also willing to be open to change. I know that that's, it's hard, you know, specifically for the treasure collector position. I know that that has been debated in the past, so I just asked for open minds. But to study the effects of it, study other communities, study if somebody recently, Selectman Pacheco, you had said that Plymouth, I think, changed their name. Burlington has actually recently gone from an elected to a, an appointed treasure collector. So there are towns out there doing these same things, and so we're asking our residents to look at that and make, weigh in on the decision of whether or not they think it's a good idea, and it would be a recommending authority to the Board of Selectmen.
I also think it wouldn't hurt, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I also don't think it would hurt to have, and maybe we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, Mr. Chairman, like ad hoc members to advise on the items that the board decides should be, the committee should be charged to study. So like, if we're gonna really study, for example, having the town treasurer go back to an appointed position, I, because I believe it was some years back appointed, it was never, maybe it was, there was a position, I apologize if I'm wrong. But if that's something that's gonna be studied, maybe having the treasurer, if they would like to be an ad hoc member, to advise, to answer questions, because not everyone's in town government now.
So, right, and I think, my vision for this is that, so the selectmen decide on the charges, they then prioritize the charges, because you certainly can't do all of these at once, you'd go nuts. But prioritize that and then formulate a recommendation, send it to the Board of Selectmen, work on the next one. But whatever the next one is, speak with the person that it involves, which I think is what you're saying. So sit down with the treasure collector and talk to her about her certifications that are necessary, her daily financial, what she does on a regular basis, and, and I know you probably, both of you being former selectmen, know a lot of what she does, but other people may not. So education on that part, and then provide a formal recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, even if that includes a meeting here today.
Well, the question, going in and as this thing formulates, when you say recommendation, at what point in this process would the recommendation come in? In other words, as I, as I picture this, is it a recommend, after studying this issue, is it a recommendation that is made to the Board of Selectmen? Or is it a recommendation that is made on the warrant and goes before the public? Or is, when it goes on the warrant, would there be some way to communicate to the voting public that here are the pros, here are the cons, and you decide without a recommendation? I mean, I, I think that's a, that's a key element.
I was envisioning, and again, I'm just speaking for my, myself as one member, I was envisioning, as the issues get studied, studied by the committee and concluded, like they come to a conclusion and then they're gonna write the recommendation, that that would come to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen, as we always, and as you did as well, would decide on which articles go on the warrant, taking the recommendation in, under advisement essentially. However, I do also, as you know, anyone can, can petition an article, so if there were people who really believe strongly and maybe the board didn't agree with the recommendation, there is that option of it still going to a town meeting.
And these would all have to do...
That's my thought on that.
And a lot of the, just, I know we haven't talked about the proposals yet, I apologize, but they would require a ballot vote and a town meeting vote and potentially a home rule petition. So this is not a short committee. If you're just looking for something fun to do for a year, this isn't the one for you. You're gonna be around for a while, and you'll be at town meeting.
And it's gonna, it's gonna be timed properly. We can't vote on one, bring it to the town, have an election.
And so that's another, that's actually a great point. We talked about this because we know that the schools are looking for potentially a project, and if they work with the MSBA, that requires a town meeting vote and a ballot initiative, and we would like to try to get everybody out to the polls at the same time instead of having multiple elections, because as you know, that's a cost. So timing is an issue. So this, this group of people would be very much involved in what's going on, timing of things, and I think I would be, you know, following up with whoever the chairman may be and say, hey, this is what we have going on, you know, how are you doing on, you know, item one, or whatever it is. And then as time go, goes on and you complete the items that the selectmen assign, I feel like as just general residents, you would organically come up with other items that you might wanna explore. Again, the selectmen might feel differently, but I just think about how this would morph around and, and live in the real world, and I, I think that you would generate something that, you know, maybe we're not even thinking about.
What I...
Random thoughts.
What I visualize is, this is a serious committee. It's, it's a change in government. We don't have a charter. Therefore, whatever comes out of this committee, my personal feeling is, if you, if you take the first two items, which were the change of the name of the board and the treasurer-collector, if those are the two that, that are the priority, let's say, those are the ones you work on, obviously the change in treasurer-collector couldn't occur until the next election, because she just got elected for three years, so there's a time span in there. I personally don't support changing the name of Board of Selectmen. However, I will tell you, a great resource you've got is Mass Municipal, because the board I sit on has counselors that are women, I have selectmen that are women, I have Select Board, I think we got maybe Select Persons. But you can find out from MMA, how many there are and what they're called and all those sort of things, so, but they can also give you guidance from other committees or put you in touch with people around the state who have worked on similar type projects. But what I'm hoping is that if the committee picks two and works on those and brings them forward, then we would have one, like I say, even if the two came forward, we know that the treasurer-collector can't happen right away. But it would be something that you'd have plenty of time to look into, because it really, these are really serious concerns, because it's a major change in town government. So that's where I was coming from.
Well, Dean and I just had a conversation, we thought it might be appropriate, this is gonna be discussed, to perhaps just throw some ideas out there in terms of formulation and direction, that's all.
And that's, we have this on our agenda, and I just wanna say thank you. We've had a lot of public response to this committee, so thank you, thank you very much for wanting to weigh in. I mean, that's really, really good, and some new names, which is always exciting.
Mr. Chairman, why are these two gentlemen here? Could we take agenda item eight A, out of order? Discussion of Town Governance Committee, discuss charge for committee?
I don't necessarily wanna, wanna do that. I do, I do know that we have somebody here that is to be appointed to one of our committees, and I would like to jump to that if we're finished with the public input. But we do have, we have a big agenda tonight, we have a lot of stuff to discuss, so I prefer, if public input is closed, you're welcome to...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like, are you entertaining, excuse me, entertaining motions to take item eight C, Agricultural Commission Appointment, out of order?
Yes, but I just wanna, are you, you guys done for the, for the moment anyway, with the public input? Okay, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to take item eight C, Agricultural Commission Appointment of Non-Voting Associate Member, Leah Hurrell, out of order.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
So I believe the Agricultural Commission at their April meeting voted to appoint Leah Hurrell as an associate member to the Agricultural Commission, and it was a unanimous vote, and that's the one vacancy we have remaining on the commission.
Let it be put on the agenda. Since Leah is here, does anybody have any questions for, you don't mind me calling you, Leah?
Well, that's fine.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
We already took care of all your relatives and your family.
Right, right.
I have no questions.
No, I just wanted to thank you for applying. I appreciate it. Yeah, we're, hopefully if it's approved tonight, we're lucky and happy to have you.
So like, a year ago, I went to the meeting and we talked about getting the board and we was gonna stack them out, the patients, you're like, do you want to join? I'm like, no, no! That was a year ago when I saw, every meeting, vacant seat, vacant seat, vacant, and I'm like, oh, man. My husband's like, you should do that. And I'm like, okay! That was enough pushing from that guy. So now this is math, we can see what happens, and here we are.
We look forward, look forward to hearing your...
I knew it was that easy, maybe it was just after...
It only takes a year of unanswered emails. I have no further questions.
Does someone wanna make a motion now?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Leah Hurrell to the Agricultural Commission as a non-voting associate member.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions, no abstentions, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Welcome, you're gonna be sworn in, you're gonna be sworn in by the clerk. I don't believe, if she's not here tonight, we're gonna fill out paperwork anyway, sign off on the paperwork.
We gotta draft up a little notification.
Pam should be here.
But we're gonna fill out that paperwork.
But she's here, I think, as an assessor.
Sousa is here.
Who is she? Oh, okay, so Pam's here as an assessor. Yeah, we, we have to...
And our meeting is May twenty-first, 7:00 PM.
Before that, fill out that paperwork?
Yes, I would.
You need to be sworn in, in order to make any votes, so, or participate.
What, vote, is it participate? Okay.
Yeah, so you can do that, what's A is a twenty-first, is a Tuesday.
Tuesday, yep.
We close at four-thirty, the town clerk would be here until then, but...
I can make myself available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have copies of tonight's agenda, so you know what's coming up? Do we have copies?
I have an extra one, actually. I only have one, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would you each like your own, we'll just make a quick copy?
Yeah, please.
Do you want one?
Yes, please.
Oh, I've got three, two copies, and the original.
Okay, while we're waiting, why don't we start with the town administrator's report?
Sure. Good evening, so the, I'm requesting an authorization to sign the Net Respec Services Agreement. As you're aware, we've been unhappy with our current provider for monitoring for a variety of reasons. We've gone out and solicited the services of Mr. Chris Rowner. He's been doing an excellent job securing us and getting ready for our mail server, and we would like him to continue doing network monitoring services. And this is at a lower cost than our previous provider as well, and so I'm looking for authorization to begin these services. It would be for...
So when you say lower costs, he was getting paid, they're getting paid more than $125 an hour?
Yes, they were getting paid $18,500 a year to monitor us. We do not anticipate his costs to go anywhere near that amount. We're doing much of the heavy lifting right now under the email agreement, because that is a major change and he is putting in some time there. We're also going to update the server that has been in need of updating for about three years, so we're finally going to do that, and he's gonna help us as well with that. And that's actually a fund from a special article from a previous town meeting.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I only had one question. I mean, I feel like you, you did sort of address it, so my question was, is there a chance that we could go over what was budgeted for network services? Can you explain where, I understand that this is replacing the current vendor. Is this part of what the Board of Selectmen recently, and I say in the last couple months, but there was a budget for network services?
Yes. So our data processing budget, last year, we budgeted for $31,000 based upon a bid for an expense account for network monitoring to change. We went out to bid, the current vendor provided a lower bid, they won the bid, and then we said to him, okay, we need to make all of these changes. Those changes didn't come to pass, we had more problems, so we've made the decision that we are no longer going to use this company, and we are going to move on. And so we do have that money that will probably fall to free cash, because we did not ever, we did not go higher. We went, he was very, it was a lower bid than what we had budgeted for. So coming up for FY20, that the folks will vote on at town meeting, the budget is substantially lower than it is. So we've accommodated for his change in price, or the change in price. I didn't answer your question.
No, no, you definitely did. I guess my other question is, so we were paying the current vendor, or are paying the current vendor hourly as well? I guess my concern is, by doing it hourly, we don't expect to exceed whatever the town people vote to budget.
So currently, the contract is supposed to be fee, not fee for service, so you're not supposed to be charged this $200 every time they come down. We, we opted not to do that anymore, because it wasn't working out for the town. So we're supposed to be covered. However, there's only a certain group of town hall employees that were actually covered, not town hall, but town employees that were covered, and we've bit by bit gathered everybody in and given them a good, solid network coverage. So that's the police and fire, we remember those issues that the chief was talking about. So the last building was council and aging. So we went to go add them. If you remember that audit, we had an audit and assessment done about our network, and it just was not feasible for us to do that, so we went back to the drawing board, and this is the best price. We are adding the other folks that were not previously included in the network. So it's a better, it's better coverage, it's better product, and it's lower price.
You did answer, I appreciate it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Long-winded.
Yeah. So it sounds like, though, if this person works 150 hours or more in the course of a year, it's, it's more than $18,000, so...
Well, if he works 150 hours?
In the course of a year, $125 an hour.
So he's not, he's not anticipating to provide that kind of hours, those kinds of hours to himself.
And you feel the same way, too?
Yes, absolutely, because once he gets everything all set up, he shouldn't ever have, arguably, he shouldn't have to come here unless there's a significant problem.
Did you have a question for...
Yeah, what I would like to see is a cap put on this, and I would suggest we use the standard $5,000 contract.
And that, you know what, that's fine.
To me, the language in this is not tight enough. Because if we go with the, the basic $5,000 standard contract that David Gay approved way back when, the next, the next level is, is $10,000 and up, which is a whole different ballgame. But this would be 40 hours if he were called in over the course of the year, okay? And we may not hit that number, but I think the contract should have some kind of a upper limit.
Upper limit.
And I think if you look at the 5,000, excuse me, the short form contract, I'll call it, as opposed to the long form contract, there's stuff in here that can be added as an addendum to that, but there may be some wording in there that would also enhance the position of the town, that's what I'm saying.
I understand it.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question, if I may. Madam Administrator, so I agree with what Selectman Goulart is saying, I think that's kinda what I was getting at with asking, are we sure we're not gonna go over? I think another way to control costs, and I'm curious to hear what my colleagues think is, do you remember how we passed that policy where the Board of Selectmen, if you're gonna use the Board of Selectmen town council budget?
Oh, yeah.
You have to get approval? I would like to see, and I don't know how this is possible, maybe we need to think about that, if, if all requests can come through one centralized person, I'm, I'm not saying it has to be you, I know that's more work, but I can foresee, which is what was happening before, is anytime someone had a problem, they were picking up the phone and the person was coming down to town hall.
Right.
So I do think, especially if we're gonna cap this, that we should control where the requests are coming from. That's it, sorry.
I think that's a good idea.
We get, well, it sort of operates that way, and Karen gets inundated with some things that she doesn't need to be inundated with. However, I'm not saying that the, there are certain aspects of our current system that just don't work. I recently found out that my documents weren't backed up, for instance. It's not acceptable, it's not okay. So we're making those changes, we're doing the heavy lifting at a time. I have no problem instituting the, the upper limit, and that makes a lot of sense. I'm hesitant to add this element of just all calls will go through one person, because for 115 employees, one person would be handling all of the network needs. I don't know if that's the best way, but I can think about that and think about a process that would meet those goals in that same initiative. We had asked our current company about that, and he said that it works better if people call separately, which was a surprise to me, because he could potentially walk them through it over the phone. So that was his, or he would be able to assign a ticket if it, if it reached that level of assigning a ticket and they needed, so he said that it was better if people called specifically about their, because I, I said the same thing. I wanted to be able to not waste the money, quote unquote, on something that we could fix internally, but he said that it was jamming things up on their end. I don't know if that's real, but that's what he told me.
I understand, no, and, and if that's what you were told, then that, that's just a fact. I guess my concern is, or my reasoning here is, not that the request has to come from someone, because I do, you know, whoever has the problem can, can put in the request, but someone should be notified.
It's the permission, it's the permission.
And then, and then I'd also like to honestly, I would like to track that information for like planning purposes going forward. Like, how often do we really have issues where someone has to come down to town hall? Because obviously troubleshooting something over the phone is probably shorter usually than having someone come down.
It's also not always issues. I feel like I'm focusing on negative a lot, but it's not always issues. Sometimes it's setting up a computer, they have to come down for that. So I understand that, controlling the hours used, that makes sense to me. So we'll put some language in there that safeguards the time.
If the department heads are told, if there's a problem in your department, someone in your department should attempt to fix it. The service can be called, and they will log it in, they'll make out a tag to create what you're looking for. And if they can resolve it over the phone by walking somebody through it, they'll write how it was resolved. If this person realizes this isn't working, then I think that's when they need to at least contact somebody at town hall and say, we've gotta make a service call for the following reason.
Right, and get authorization to do so.
We'd see what kinda support we're getting, that they're capable of resolving on the end of a phone line, because that's what we want. And then also, if they have to come in, because there's a problem, we know with the current service, they've shown up before and after they left, the problem's still here. So this will also be like a report card, but we'll, we'll generate the history you're looking for.
Yep, I'm just gonna draft some language for it.
Thank you, I appreciate, and thank you for being open-minded on, on maybe some potential language cleanup. I'm not beholden to certain language. I'm not beholden to certain language. I guess I just have an idea that this should be trackable. And I think it might help with like budgeting issues going forward. Like, are we over-investing in network? Are we under utilizing it? And I think that that's a good thing for the town. So I didn't mean it like, oh, we have to track everyone. This isn't, you know, babysitting. I just mean, you know, I just want to be able to track everything.
You'll also know if we're going to have a $5,000 cap, how much of that actually got used? Because then when you put the budget together for the next year, if everything's going well, you might say, you know what, we're going to renew the contract, but let's go with, I don't know, $3,000 this year or something. Because you can always amend it if you happen to have a flurry of problems. But it's a good tool for tracking that, too.
Do we know if there's going to be a minimum charge for a phone call? So we call them up? I'm familiar with IT people. Shut your computer off, put it back on, that kind of stuff.
That's usually my go-to.
So let's say it's five minutes.
He's not like that. He only charges if he comes out. That's what, that's the beauty of him. I shouldn't say it like that, but that's what's great about this, that he's only going to come if he cannot fix it, and that's what you pay for.
So the phone calls are basically covered under the basic agreement he's already got.
Right, exactly, exactly. And he's been very responsive so far with this email. I have very positive experience with him. He's also worked with the Police Department, and Sergeant Cronin is very happy with him. So we're getting our own references, and it's working out very well for us. So I have no problem, and I'm sure he won't have a problem either.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
You wanted this to be effective when? You didn't want it to...
Really, as soon as possible. But that will be something we bring up next time. I want him, and he's aware of this, to carry us through the transition, is what I'm calling it, from, because we're doing some things differently to cut costs. So I want him to carry us through. He's already told me, so I can tell everybody else how to back up email. And he, I was concerned about the server issue for myself, and he solidified that for me. He looked and found out, and then I confirmed it with the company. And it's since been resolved, so that's good, but still kind of a scary thought that it wasn't happening for many, many months.
It actually begins the first of July, doesn't it? I mean, under the agreement?
Well, we haven't signed that. I mean, that's what our budget is... No, the current agreement for the email server is now, and then expires June 30th.
Okay.
And then this agreement would be to cover this transitional period and bring us into the next fiscal year.
So have we terminated Terminal Exchange?
Officially, yes.
Not to be redundant.
Yes, we did.
It's as of June 30th, though, right?
It is as of June 30th. We've renewed our Office 365 accounts to be the middle of July so that we don't have any hangups, and we have plenty of time. The owner was very apologetic. He was a very nice gentleman. We had a few conversations, and he was, you know, he was sad to lose our business but understood. And, you know, it was a positive experience, even though it was a negative, if that makes sense. But he was very sad to lose us.
I have one last question regarding the email account, if I may, Mr. Chairman, very quickly. Who's in charge of that in terms of, is it one person that does it? Is each department going to be monitoring...
How we're doing it now, or how we're going to do it?
How we're going to do it. I know how we're doing it now for Karen.
Chris Rowner builds us all our own emails, and we have unlimited. So anybody that comes onto a committee and might need an email, he can immediately set them up. There's no charge. And then if there's ever a problem about, you know, say somebody was terminated and it wasn't a good thing, didn't work well, we have access to that email to get any documents. That might be public record or any sort of items we might need to save per public record.
But you also can disable their access immediately.
You can disable their access. You can audit it right now. We audit.
That's the good thing.
You know, we could take things off and put people on. And then there's no issue. We've had multiple issues with email. That's no secret. And those will all be resolved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll have that the next meeting.
That'll be next time. Stay tuned. This next item is a very exciting piece of news. The Municipal Vulnerability Planning Grant that we applied for, we have been awarded $22,000 to put together our MVP plan. This is a building block for future climate change grants that, being part of the Taunton River and having some substantial coastline, puts us right in line with climate change action grants, which the governor is throwing money at right now. So this is something we definitely want to be in the pipeline for. This does come with some responsibilities on part of the town, but the department heads are aware of that. And it's a couple of workshops. We've pledged that we would hold them, that we would attend. But it really coincides with Selectman Goulart's Stormwater Initiatives, all the items that are coming down through the state about shoring up our coastline, no pun intended, and making sure that we are ready for, when the bad storm happens, for flooding. So this walks us through identifying our issues, our areas of vulnerability, and itemizes what our planning would be in order to minimize the casualty of the risk.
You have a question?
Were you going to go first, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Okay. Yeah, just very quickly, on page one of the, where it kind of is the scope of services, it says, under Process Summary, second paragraph, led by a local project lead, a core team from the municipality, and the MVP provider. And you had mentioned stormwater. Do we have a designated core team from the municipality? I would think, and I might be going out on a limb, that maybe the Board of Health makes more sense because there might be an emergency preparedness component, and then obviously there might be stormwater components. And both of those committees kind of fall under the umbrella of Board of Health. So what was the, who's the core team, I guess?
So the core team is police, fire, your emergency services, highway. So police, fire, highway, stormwater. We did have the committee submit a letter of support for this, so they're involved. Todd Pilling, our health agent, who also happens to be a civil engineer, is also part of the core team. Myself, I just, I mean, I filed for it, so I booked myself. Jim Aguirre, the building commissioner, to an extent, because he does respond in all emergencies. But mostly it's, who would you call if a giant wave crashed into Dayton and they have to handle it? Who would you call? So yes, Board of Health is on there, but Todd sort of is the bridge for that. And he also does serve on stormwater.
Is this core team the same individuals who will be letting the state know, like, what the scope of the project will be? Isn't there something else that needs to be submitted, a plan?
So that's what this grant, oh, do you mean the Hazard Mitigation Plan?
Correct.
So that's included in this. So we're one of those communities that didn't have one. So we threw in some extra money, or requested some extra money for our Hazard Mitigation Plan because 80% of the work is the same. So it made sense.
Isn't Serpent helping us?
Serpent is helping, yes. So we, Bill.
Who's going to like submit that, I guess? Is that you?
That's me and Bill, and the core team has to work on it. So we get help from the state. We have these workshops. We identify our places that are vulnerable for flooding, for casualty. We identify how we would assist and respond to that. So Dayton Rock Park rings a bell. What will we do? What have you done in the past? You brought everybody out. That would go. So things like that. That's what we would do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I do need a signature on that contract. It was a scanned copy, so it can be, but I need you to...
Sure. Who monitors the 120 to 200 hours that we're supposed to commit? Who's going to let the state know?
That's part of my duties under this grant.
That's going to be your responsibility.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve...what do we want to call this? The paperwork for the MVP planning, no. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the MVP Planning Grant Contract and authorize you to sign it.
Is there a second?
I will second it, but I do have a question if I can ask on the discussion. Is it the chairman, or I see the Madam Administrator's name on it. So is the authorization for you or for the chairman?
It is the chairman. I'm just the contract manager, which means I'm the one that makes sure all this stuff gets done.
Okay. No further questions?
Thank you very much.
I've got just a little bit of information on this because we had this on the agenda today. The Governor, S-10, Senate 10, that's the Governor's Climate Resilience Finance Bill. This is additional funding over and above the first funding he announced out in West, I mean, Westboro over a year ago. In addition to that, Speaker DeLeo and Representative Golden have got a proposal that's called a Green Works Bill. It isn't written yet. But it should be another source of funding. And what my comment was, are they going to compete with one another? Or is this going to be supplemental funding? And they said, it's not competition. I said, okay, the only other request I make is, with all of this, if both of these get funded, I would hope that there's going to be a mechanism for small communities to get funding that is not through competitive grants. Because if everything is based on competitive grants, there are small communities in this state that won't get a dime. And the Select Board member from Nowell spoke up and said, you're absolutely right. So hopefully, if all of this passes, there's going to be another way to allocate funds besides, there'll be grants, but also grant money that you don't have to battle somebody over.
I also think if we regionally go for it with our neighbors that share coastline or share some of the burden of what, like the tidal river, if that, you know, that would make us a little bit more competitive there, but I agree with you.
I actually really agree with that, and we might going forward want to contact. I have a Selectman colleague in Somerset who might be, you know, willing to collaborate with us on that and increase our likelihood.
So on the motion, any further discussion on the motion?
I would just mention that there is a Cape Club Collaborative that's being led by Nick Corners. Excuse me. Nick Corners was there, and he's tying this into green communities. So that's something to keep in mind. Dan Nappick, Town Administrator Yama, he is trying to get, if you will, a collaborative on the Cape so that those communities can get money also. So what you're talking about, regionalizing, they're talking.
Yeah, it makes sense for them.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, no extensions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry. I took a lot of time to...
No, no, not at all. No, and thank you to everyone involved in securing the MVP grant. Thank you.
Have I signed the right spot?
Sign in the right place?
Is that the rest of your report?
That's it. That's all I have.
All business, third reading of, and the adoption of the WISP. We've read this twice, or we've mentioned it twice, the WISP. Is there any further discussion on it? Is the Written Information Security Plan?
No, no further discussion. I actually think it's very timely with our discussion of network services.
Yeah, we had some changes in our first discussion, first reading. None in the second?
None in the second.
Yep. So I'll entertain a motion.
I will, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adopt the Written Information Security Plan, WISP, policy, and have it be effective upon approval this evening.
Any further discussion?
No. Thank you, Madam Administrator.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, no extensions. We rescind the vote on the window replacement at Town Hall Green Communities Initiative. I believe that we voted on replacing the windows under the green, the money that was given to the town. However, they're not allowing it. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
May I make a comment on that? The reason is because everything has to audit. So if the state were to do, like, an audit of what a municipality used the funds that they were given, essentially the payback on this in terms of energy cost and savings, it would take, I forget exactly what our regional coordinator said, but it was a couple hundred years for the payback. So it's just not...
Wasn't enough.
Yeah, it's not worth it in terms of energy cost and energy savings. So we have a meeting next week on Wednesday with Energy Source, who did our energy audit for the town. And so they're going to help steer us in the right direction. I think we're going to stay with the electric charging station. That got the green light. There's a couple of things regarding the boiler idea that we need to discuss. They're going to come down. They're going to do, like, a site visit, take a look at the boiler. And then we'll have further updates. But for now, we definitely need to rescind the vote on this window replacement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the vote on window replacement at Town Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, no extension, it passes. Approval and sign John Goufoyle's public relations contract. I assume everybody's had an opportunity?
I have some concerns over what he sent over. But I don't know if you'd like to skip down to 8A because these three folks are here, and this could be rather lengthy.
I, I do have quite, I do have quite, as you can see on my screen, a lot of marks on this. So I'm not, I'm amenable to the suggestion, if it was a suggestion from the town administrator on this one.
It is a suggestion, a request, actually, because...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Agenda Item 8A, New Business, Discussion of the Town Governance Committee. Is our next agenda item?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extensions, no extensions, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Agenda item is the Discussion of the Town Governance Committee, and we'll discuss the charge for the committee.
As requested, I generated a list. I put five on here. There's one item that is not listed, though I do believe we should talk about it. And it's because it's been talked about by members of the public, and I think we would be doing a disservice if we did not entertain things that we know about. Although I don't know if it's something that we should task the committee with so early on. But I did not include deregionalizing the schools department. It is something that I think has been bandied about more than not in recent months. So I thought that it should be part of tonight's discussion, though I do believe it to be a little bit of an extensive conversation that shouldn't be, you know, swinging out the gates on this committee of course.
Actually, I was in touch, so this has been, I've heard people talk about it. When I reached out to, so when I read the regional agreement, I'm on the amended agreement task force. It is a town vote that would basically allow a town to pursue deregionalization. I did reach out to a former school committee member and a current school committee member and asked if they would be willing to serve in, like, an ad hoc capacity, something I had alluded to earlier, for other things that they might study. And they were quite amenable to it. Obviously, a discussion like this would be punted back to the Regional School District School Committee, of course, who I would assume would prepare a warrant item to discuss deregionalization, although this has never been pursued before, so I'm also not sure of the procedure internally. But it does sound like there is an appetite for something like this to be studied. And again, what I would envision, if this were something that the Town Governance Study Committee were to embark on, that the Town Governance Study Committee would make a recommendation, which could then be forwarded to the school committee, who I'm sure would do their own review and study as well. So that's my thoughts on that.
My, I am a caveat that I don't want it to take it, well, I don't want it to take away from literally the reason for it to be developed. I feel that it would dominate the conversation, if that makes sense, just organically.
My point simply on this, and I, again, I'm stating that I understand why you wouldn't include this on here. It is a hot-button issue, right? We could do a whole committees, school committee, could do a whole subcommittee just studying this. But I do think it's something worthy of discussion, and it's a hot-button issue right now. But I do, I do understand why you didn't include this on here.
I'm not necessarily in favor of doing that right now. We've got a few items here that we're asking the, that committee to deal with. This is a really big issue. I have my position on it. But I think it's maybe premature to charge this committee with something like this. I think this is going to be overwhelming. I think one of the gentlemen in the front here mentioned the time consumption for this committee, and this is really going to add a lot to this committee.
And I should preface this. This is just a list of items. I do not expect you to vote on five items for this committee to do. I think that would be overwhelming for anybody. But if you picked, like, one through three or something like that. But that, this is just what popped into my head. Again, you might not agree. There might be something on this list or not on this list that you think about. And again, members of the public, too, might be thinking about stuff that we're not even thinking about. So this is just what I came up with. And again, it wasn't really easy, and I would like to preface this that it's not personal in any way. It's just me viewing the town of Dayton and how it could run, or how things could change, and we could be vulnerable in a certain way if we didn't examine it. So I just want us to be prepared and ready, I guess.
So why don't you let the public know what these five...
Okay, excuse me. I want to comment on this, since we haven't really got into the list. First of all, the way you deregionalize is the reverse of how you regionalize. It is a committee made up of people from Dayton and Rehoboth, who, when we were a nine-to-eleven, excuse me, nine-to-twelve regional high school, formed a committee of residents from two towns to study expanding the district. How you take it upon... How you take it apart is the way you put it together, in reverse order. This is not for one town to do, and it should be coming from both towns, and the committee is not made up of all school committee members. I believe there were two, and I think it was, was more than six people on that committee, but in any case, this really isn't a local-town type issue. I think that's what the regional district would tell us. As far as the, the list that we have, I'd like to add one, and that's explore the electric light district becoming part of the Town of Dayton, because number one, it's the smallest district we have, it's been talked about for years, we've had difficulty getting three people to serve as, I think they're called commissioners, and I did speak to one of the commissioners, current, and the agreement was, yeah, they need to look at that one. There was a time when it was, their funding was, they had such money set aside, we didn't even have a tax, all right, 'cause we had money in reserve, but now we are taxed, but that's a tiny one, and how you would, you would do that would be a good trial run if you were, in fact, somewhere down the road, when the bond issue was paid off, at the water district, you'd wanna consider it, but that's my only suggestion.
Okay, so before we start adding things to the list, why don't we go over the list that we have before us and let the public know what's on that list?
Sure, so the first is, the reason for the committee's even thinking about it was renaming the Board of Selectmen as Select Board. The second item was whether or not to combine the treasurer and collector positions. The third, and I do view these as two separate topics, so I did list them out separately. The third is to establish a treasurer-collector position as appointed and not elected. Also, just a comment, I would like to be able to speak to that committee on these two points specifically, for just understanding of why I'm asking these questions. The fourth is separating the roles of the chairman of the Board of Assessors and the principal assessor. I understand that they're different positions, but they're filled by the same person, which gives me some questions. Again, it's not personal, it's just questions of one person filling two roles. Exploring the Dayton Water District becoming part of the Town of Dayton organization, right now, they're two separate entities, and then if we did add Selectman Goulart's suggestion, explore the electric light district becoming part of the Town of Dayton organization as well.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you, actually. Do you and Selectman Goulart have an idea of how many of these items you want to charge the Town Governance Study Committee with? And I guess you could always add more as they complete items, if they're willing to stay on, but what are my colleagues envisioning in terms of the number? And again, some of these will probably take longer to sort of come to a consensus on and to investigate than others.
I'm in favor of all five, and I don't mind adding with Mrs. Goulart regarding electric light districts, so all six. We can prioritize, I'm sure...
That was actually my question also.
Yeah, so we'll have a committee, regarding the Select Board, all seven may not wanna interview each individual selectman, but they may assign one or two people to say, sit down with Mrs. Goulart, sit down with me, sit down with you, and, and give our positions on this particular item. So I can see the committee kind of breaking up a little bit, and then reporting back to that committee as to what the conversation was about. So I, I am in favor, I can't speak for Mrs. Goulart, but I am in favor of the five that are before us. We can prioritize, if you wish, and I also don't mind adding the electric light district. I'd be interested in hearing from Mrs. Goulart.
If I were a person sitting out there who volunteered to find out what my charge is and what I'd be willing to work on, quite frankly, I would be saying to this committee, how about you assign the first three to us, and let's see how that goes, okay? Because two and three are connected, okay? And two and three have a profound effect, because they're going elect, from elected to appointed. Renaming the board doesn't really change the makeup of the board, but two and three really have a strong effect on the operation of town government.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree wholeheartedly with Selectman Goulart on this. I'm actually not so much concerned, and I'm not saying you are Selectman Goulart, or you are Chairman Pacheco, I'm just, I'm not concerned with how many charges we give the committee so much as the prioritization, and I think that that's important, because just my personal opinion, I'm not singling anything out on here, but I do think there are things on here that are more important than others, some based on timing, some based on just the nature of what's gonna be studied, but I do also agree that two, three, and four, maybe, maybe you weren't implying this, I apologize, Selectman Goulart, I think two, three, and four, in my opinion, are probably the most important, and I think are the most important to the structure and functions of those offices and their scope within our town government here, so that's how I feel about that.
I think you had said one, two, and three. I'm in favor of, one of the appointments is changing to the Select Board. This is what started this whole thing. I feel strongly about that, that's an issue, not that complicated. For example, Plymouth, when they changed it, there were five selectmen, they had five selectmen, at the time, were selectmen. Two were females, all five opposed changing to Select Board, but the townspeople wisely, in my opinion, wisely changed it to the Select Board, so I think it's important, I think timing-wise, it's important. I agree with Mrs. Goulart that the top three, especially two and three, are so related that they should be prioritized as the first three items to discuss.
Did you say one, two, or three, Selectman Goulart?
One, two, I thought you...
I said two, three, or four.
No, no, one, two, and three is what I was saying, and if I was sitting out there. Now, the other thing is, if you look at four, we all understand the connection between two and three, but if you look at four, one of those is still gonna remain an elected position.
Right.
All we're saying is that, right now, it's both an elected position and an appointed position held by one person, so the question is, is that a good organizational setup?
Exactly.
So that doesn't really affect changing town government, like making an elected official into an appointed official, okay? And quite frankly, I mean, if, if the recommendation comes back that the name of the Board of Selectmen gets changed, if that's what people vote, I can live with that, I don't have a problem, I was expressing my personal opinion on it, 'cause being the only female on the board and the only third that's ever served, I consider a generic term, so, but if that's what the townspeople vote, that's fine.
It just, as I've stated in the past, this isn't just about your position, it's about my daughters and granddaughters, if they wanted to run for a position, that they shouldn't be called a selectman, they should be a Board of, Select Board. Mr. Perry?
If I may, I'd like to remind you a little bit, go back to the point that Selectman Goulart made, regarding how the board is charged. I think baby steps first, perhaps, for this committee in terms of, you can't shove everything you wanna do at, because there's gonna be some growing pains there, and I would agree with Selectman Goulart's point of maybe the first three, to allow the, this committee to grow, to interact, to work out some wrinkles before you get into the very heavy issues, of which two and three are, but I think, you know, going in with a lighter charge and allowing the board to formulate, excuse me, the committee, to formulate, to grow, et cetera, might be a wise move.
What is, what is there gonna be, is there gonna be a timeframe for these? Like, are you gonna tell the committee this should be done at this point, like, you know, their discussion, we, you know, as the committee, they discuss this point, and, you know, see this versus this? Are you going to give them a timeframe of what, when you want it answered, per se?
I'm not convinced we can give a timeframe. Obviously, we wanna see how it's going, but to just say you gotta have it within thirty days or sixty days, I'm not sure it's appropriate for us to make that decision. I don't know how often the group's committee's gonna meet.
I think it's gonna depend, too, on, for example, if we weren't coming up on the annual town meeting right now, and this committee were appointed last fall or whenever, we might ask them for a progress report, and if they say, "We're not ready to put this on the warrant," but we'll give a progress report, and we may see that, because as I say, with the elected people becoming appointed, they just got re-elected for three years, there's no crunch there.
Mr. Cronin?
That, that doesn't mean that you have to wait two and a half years.
No, that's right.
That can go to a vote, or a ballot vote, whichever way you ask them legally, that could be done right away.
Right, but what, I think in response to your question, I don't feel comfortable saying, "You gotta get this done in this amount of time," because as baby steps, yes, you wanna walk through this and do the research and talk to people, people out there in the town, and people in communities around the state, as I say, MMA will be a good resource, and with a progress report, you can say, "This is where we are, and we anticipate bringing in one or two recommendations for the town meeting," whatever's coming up, whether it's the special one. The only thing I wanna mention about the, the electric light district, I almost called it Fall River Electric Light, 'cause that's what it was a hundred years ago. I look at that and think about, that's a major change in legislation and all that other stuff is involved, and what comes to mind is, the first bridge project we got hit with was Berkeley-Dighton, the biggest one we've ever had. Couple of months later, we got Old Somerset Avenue. It would've been nice to start with Old Somerset Avenue and done baby steps, that's all I'm saying, and so I understand, you know, that was my comment there, but in any case, I don't, I don't wanna set a time limit.
I do think, though, kind of, I'm not sure that's the, the direction you were going, but maybe have a progress report, you know, like, every couple of months, report back to the Board of Selectmen and give us an idea as how it's going.
Also, is there been, how many?
Seven.
Seven, eight?
How many seats?
On the, on the committee list.
We thought...
We actually haven't voted on that, but I don't, no.
You voted on seven, because we, we wanted to give enough people to, to share in the work, but we didn't wanna do too many that a quorum would be problematic, so we went with seven.
I believe you did.
She did.
Oh, you did.
I have a question for you and for Selectman Goulart. So I guess I'm asking procedurally, you had said if people, you're just giving number one as an example, if people are okay with Select Board, you have no issue with it. I also feel that way, so is it the position of the board that, whatever the Town Governance Study Committee recommends, if that requires a ballot, if that requires getting on a town meeting warrant, that you'll support it, even if we personally might not agree? Or is the board amenable, or does the board foresee us not taking a recommendation? I guess I'm just...
You might not, depending on what they come up with. I mean, I, I wouldn't blanket it.
I wanna keep my options open, because...
Correct, I wouldn't blanket it, I would listen to what they had to say.
We want the residents to get on the committee, just personal opinion, and come up with whatever they wanna, come up with, or else we would've made the decision ourselves, so I'm just not sure. It sounds like we're all on the same page, so that's good.
I, I think, and the other thing, too, is you talked about getting information out. Because this is such a serious change, let's say, one, two, and three, I think it'll be wise, and, for example, if we were proposing a new bylaw, you would actually have a public hearing posted and everything like that, and you can have informational meetings, but then, I think, before it, it goes to a town meeting, there should be a posted public hearing, so that everybody, we did this with the Stormwater, I think people could come in and say, "What is on, what is this about?" and, you know?
Absolutely.
I think that's really important.
Mr. Cronin?
Just to comment on, where Selectman Goulart just said, which is very valid, it still boils down to you three having the authority, so, could it happen?
Absolutely. You, you three people have the final decision to make. We can give you all the recommendations in the world, doesn't mean you have to go on them, but that's, that's the, we're cooking from, you know? We do that for a job.
I guess I meant, I'm willing, no matter what comes to us, to support, if it needs to go to a ballot, if it needs to go to, you know, town meeting, but that doesn't mean me, I might not stand up and say, "This is how I feel about this," but I supported it getting there, I supported people having their say at the meeting, or the ballot vote, whatever it is.
Well, just from my own personal perspective, I think when the study committee is formed, and the board charges that committee, again, let's say with the first three items here, to me, that says, the Selectmen's Board is, is willing to put that on the warrant.
Yes, I feel strongly, absolutely.
Because if you're not, there's no point in having that.
Exactly.
Exactly, exactly.
And it might not come to that.
The position I stay tonight, as everybody knows, I actually did a big reversal on camera one night on another issue, not, not as serious as this, but in all honesty, when, when I see, and I, and I truly mean this, when I see the caliber of the work that this committee's gonna do and what they're gonna bring forward, absolutely, it's gonna go on the warrant, in my opinion, it's gotten, no question about it.
I just feel if you don't, if you don't, I'm not saying we all have to agree with whatever the recommendation is, but I just feel strongly, as someone on this side of the table, and you gentlemen have been on this side of the table as well, that the reason why people volunteer is to make a difference, so if, if they wanna have their say, they can have their say. I don't wanna be the person to say no, because the whole reason why people volunteer is to have some sort of positive affect. And positive contribution, exactly, so me telling them no, I mean, who really wants to spend all that time studying something, and then the very people who charged them with a task basically, you know, said no to whatever they were recommending?
That's why I made that comment, you're basically saying, we want your study, whether we agree or disagree, it's something that, by virtue of you deciding to charge a committee, you're willing to, and, and saying you will support putting it on the warrant, the townspeople vote on it.
Absolutely.
Well, the only reason why it would go on the warrant, if there's changes.
Well, that's it, they might come back and say, "We don't think that you should combine the treasurer-collector positions, we don't think it should be an appointed position," so it might not make it up there, but there would be no reason to make it there, 'cause there would be no change.
There may be, when all the information is collected on a particular point, part of that is to, to, to study the issue, and if it comes back overwhelmingly negative in the sense that this is not a good thing to do, then, then I would agree, you know, perhaps shouldn't go on warrant, if the list is this long of positives and this long of negatives.
But in that way, we would always be taking the recommendation of those individuals, whether yes or no, what they came up with and the time that they spent studying it, so I totally agree.
I don't want this to turn into another RAC committee.
Ugh.
In that, so much work was done, everyone knew there was one issue that needed to be resolved, and on the Dayton side knew this was not gonna get resolved, and yet, that committee worked so hard for so long, and, you know? So I don't see, I see, I see this committee, this governance committee, coming in with recommendations, and it will either be, put these on the warrant, because the feedback we got, people wanna be able to vote on it, or, put this one on the warrant, but don't put that one on, because the people said this, that, and the other, that's what I'm looking for, whatever the committee says, put it on the warrant, or don't put it on the warrant, because you will have done all the work, and, and, to the best of my knowledge, we don't have a one issue, like the RAC committee had, that can't be resolved. I think whatever we're looking at can be resolved, one way or another.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll entertain a motion, then.
Mr. Chairman, I motion, oh, I'm sorry.
Question, okay.
No, it's okay.
If all these, say, the committee has resolved all these one through six, does the Select Board now get new ones for the committee to go over, or do we, or not me, but the committee come to you with new things that they foresee or think that should be on there?
Yeah, I, I see the board coming in with a few of these items, so this is how we resolve it, we got a few more, and then when those are complete, they may come and say, "We'd like to disband, we're, you know, I've had a year of this, and meeting it twice a week," or whatever it is, or they may say, "We're ready to deal with something else, and while we were studying this, we came up, we found out that it was an interest in this, and presented it to the board, and we could charge the committee." People might wanna remain on the committee, or they might want new members, but that's how I see it, I'm not sure how, how this season...
No, I think...
That makes a lot of sense.
Well, we're gonna come up with...
They gotta vote on your charge.
Give me this again.
Mr. Chairman, are you entertaining motions?
Yes, I am.
I, I motioned that we task initially the Town Governance Study Committee to study, one, renaming the Board of Selectmen the Select Board, two, combining the treasurer and collector positions, and three, establishing the treasurer-collector position as appointed, not elected, with the understanding, you don't have to put this as part of the motion, that we may task them with additional things as these initial items get completed.
Okay, and I will second the motion for those three items.
Is there any further discussion? If not... If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? No abstentions, ayes have it.
So the next step, we, now that we've decided, there was some feedback that people wanted to know, what are we doing? I don't know if I'm interested, because I want to know what I'd be doing. So I will quote unquote advertise this list publicly, and then I'm expecting May 22nd. Maybe you'd like to get this committee started and make your appointments.
Is there a deadline for your application?
It would be May 20th at 12:30, because we'd have to put it onto the agenda. I know, and they're probably waiting for this, right, to figure out what they would be doing, so.
It's tough to answer questions, because I'm like, we only have a bunch of ideas, I don't know.
So, anyway, thank you very much, again, I'm very happy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You went and indicated that you wanted the Board of Selectmen to interview these candidates. Are you talking about a formal interview, or just review the resumes that they're submitting?
Well, I don't think, it doesn't call, the application doesn't call for resume, does it? There's a little, several lines down at the bottom that say, what do you think your qualifications are?
Oh, the volunteer form.
Volunteer form.
But that's what I meant, as a resume, kind of a list of the reasons why you should be on the committee, so.
I think, personally, I think everybody wants to be in one way, shape, or form, involved in their government. Personally, I think for a committee of this nature, perhaps the board should get a feel for that individual's background and, their background and understanding of how government works, I guess. And just to, I'm searching for the words here now, but just to get a good feel, I guess, and you've got that this is the type of person we might want to have on the committee. And it should be, again, going back to something I said earlier, I personally feel, and I think Dean does too, that if you're going to go out there to MMA or to other towns and ask what they've done, or other town managers, say, you know, the Dighton Board of Selectmen approved me to be on this committee. This is what the, approved the committee. So it gives validation to someone showing up at, you know, the select board's door and saying, oh, by the way, we'd like to discuss this. I think it adds validity to it, personal opinion.
I almost think also about, we recently, well, before the election, we filled a vacancy on the D.R. School Committee. And we had four good candidates, and we brought them in, and each, we talked to each one of them. And it was a tough decision, I think we made a good decision, the person did run again and did get elected. But if you saw those meetings, you heard them talk about what was important to them as far as being on a school committee. So being on a committee like this, I think, is important to hear.
Is that what you'd, would you like to do that? Because that would, we would schedule it, in that case, so that we can keep our agenda on, I would create the agenda in such a way that we wouldn't.
And how do you feel about that, Dr. Z?
How many applications did we get?
So far, I have nine names, is that right? We just added another one, it was a new, a new name, so I can respect what you're saying, and I tend to agree. But the other side of me is like, the Joe resident, I don't want to dissuade them from wanting to be involved in this. I think that if we had a healthy mix, that might give good perspective to the group. But I understand what you're saying.
We might have a special meeting to do it.
Special meeting to do it, so maybe.
I think it would require a special meeting, because even if you gave everyone five minutes, if there were nine people, I suspect there will be more, that's 45 minutes, just that.
Well, especially after, and after today, where we've talked about it, you know, very well, we might have even more people. So maybe not May 22nd, maybe that's a bad deadline to give.
Final comment, if I may. I certainly, you can read a CV, or you can read the form and see what it says on it. I think your comfort level increases significantly when you actually, that person or persons have to look you in the eye and say, this is what I think, or this is my response to your question. I think your comfort level will be increased significantly, saying yea or nay for that particular individual.
And I support these interviews, because as you know, if, for example, there's a vacancy on the zoning board, the zoning board interviews, there's, we're creating this committee, so if this is going to happen, it does fall upon us.
So I'm going to propose June 5th as a special meeting for this, if that is the flavor. I think that the week of Memorial Day might be not so great.
I agree. So this is the Wednesday?
This would be the Wednesday after the town meeting.
Okay.
You had a question?
Yes, just piggybacking on that, you know, I definitely agree with the interviews. I think it's great, you get to know people, you get to see people. It's one thing to have something on paper, and another thing to see them in person. However, I don't want, you know, this to be, if someone doesn't have a background in government, I don't want that to be, because people want to learn. You know, and that's how people learn, everyone started somewhere, you know.
I see that as a mixed sport. Some people with experience in the government, and other people who are interested.
No, 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 I didn't mean to say that, you know, you should, no, not at all, I totally, totally agree.
Absolutely, you know, because there's a lot of people out there that want to be more involved. Like tonight, I came because I didn't know anything about it, so I wanted to learn and want to know what this is all about.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll tell you honestly, when we had those interviews for the school committee, I didn't know any of those candidates. I didn't know their backgrounds or anything. So in listening to the questions and the discussion, I felt like I got a feel for, yeah, and I understood their experience and why they were interested in serving.
And that's why I support the ad hoc members, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's important to, also, to interview them. When I was on the ZBA, I would interview potential candidates for vacancy on the ZBA. And I've come across some people who wanted to discuss the last three, why did we make the last three decisions? And I, that person didn't get on the board, obviously. But you get a feel for these people, and I do think, I think it was you, Mr. Perry, that said how important it is to interview these people. And I do think it's, but I also agree there should be a special meeting, because it's going to be time consuming, as we already know.
Will this be individual, or it's going to be hard to get twelve applicants the same night now?
I know.
I think we should schedule it, I think we should schedule it.
June 5th.
Yeah, like that night, you say.
Basically, the job, like if I were hiring you, I would call you up and say, hey, can you make such and such a time?
But if each person gets five or 10 minutes, then it should be just like we did that night at the school committee, this person and this person, and then we just have to be, you know, sort of strict about keeping on the timeline.
So you know what, for scheduling purposes, maybe if we did go forward with the June 5th date, maybe the deadline to submit a letter of interest or an application would be the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which I think is the 28th.
Yes.
Thank you. So the 28th by 1 o'clock. Gives us enough time to come.
15 minutes apart, 10 minutes apart.
Well, we, yeah, yeah, and we had all candidates, for the school committee, we had all candidates present. They were all, you know, they had each other present to interview.
I think 10 minutes, because if you get 15, 20 people, then, you know, that's like a Tuesday. Which is fine, but, you know, we're supposed to be mindful of that.
So we want June 5th, 6 o'clock or 6:30, what's?
What is the flavor of the board?
I prefer a 6, but I'm not sure.
I prefer 6 as well.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, if you're interested, get your applications in, May 28th by 1 P.M.
Everyone, everyone's welcome. The only people that will not be considered for appointment out of Board of Selectmen currently serving.
When you first said selectmen, I started looking at their faces.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There goes all our public.
We've reached the hot topic.
Well, I'm glad to see that there's an interest.
I'm thrilled, and we did get some new names, which is, that's always exciting to me, that there's new people looking to serve the community.
And I do strongly feel it should be a mixed group of people, not just somebody, people who've always worked in government, I think you've got to get a mix, get different ideas, and that's how things progress. So why don't we go back to old business?
Yes, thank you for changing that. So at the last meeting, we went through this proposal, and then we had requested that he provide sort of this itemized breakdown of what exactly we'd be talking about, and a sample agreement. So that's what you have here. In his estimate there, I wrote notes here, that's my handwriting. There were some inconsistencies between the proposal and this estimate that he provided. So those were the issues that I had, that I alluded to earlier. That $36,000 is not a real figure, I guess, is what I'm telling you.
Can I make a comment on that? So when I went through, and this is to everyone, to my colleagues, to the public.
Why don't we let the town administrator complete their conversation about this?
Well, I think we might end up saying the same thing. But what I was just going to note is my notes here, the proposal, he has a higher charge than what he actually proposed for website design for the fire website, website design for the police website, so those should each be $3,500 each. The website design for the complete town news and events portal feed, so we would not be getting a website from them, but just that news portal that allows us to update different happenings, like, hey, we're having this town governance study committee. So that's supposed to be $6,500. And then there's this added charge, this SSL certificate, that was not, I don't believe was in the proposal. And then the domain registration, they would only need two of those. We already register both of our domains that we have, so we're already taking care of that. And then this website hosting comes free if you sign up for this proposal, so that $99 a month can be ignored if you went through that. The services for government, public relations services at 8.99, that's also not, that is the quoted price, wow. But what's the difference between that one and the one May to June? I think what he's doing is if we would get started right away. So he has compounded all of these charges into one, so it's not an accurate figure, and that's all I wanted to say. I'm sorry, Selectman Zoukakis.
Yeah, no, actually, I apologize for interrupting you. No, you're spot on. What I also noticed, just to piggyback off what you stated, Madam Administrator, which I agree with, is I feel like there were some things that were charged that were supposed to be part of the package. So for example, already the website design figure is wrong, but for the town news/events portal website design part, he said 9,500, but then he, as part of that, if you scroll up to what the actual wording was, yeah, my apologies. Excuse me, or view, excuse me. The actual wording in the proposal, it says $6,500, town news and events portal, professional photography session for social media and website use. And again, I'm using this as an example, if you scroll down, he has charged that separately. So my concern is, A, we're being almost double charged, I don't know the terminology for it. Double dipping.
Double charged, that's right.
And then also, the proposal itself is a little misleading, and I'll give you an example. So services for government departments, government public relations retainer, quantity two, because it's for the months of May and June. That's a little misleading to me, because I would want to see what the yearly total is going to be. So I actually had to do a little bit of math to like figure it out, am I correct about that?
Well, the yearly total he lists at the very end, which I think is strange.
But what I'm saying is, if he's only billing us on that part for two months, then we would have additional charges, because he's not, oh, but this is only for the two months until the end of this fiscal year.
So he works with municipal, so he understands what like, municipal plans. But we don't have to start in May or June, we don't have to do that. So I think this is like an à la carte, right, what's not happening. There's also the graphic design, the graphic design for the fire patch, the digitization of the fire patch and the police patch. We don't have to do that.
It's all optional.
So I'm, I just don't want you to look at this total figure.
I have like an à la carte.
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
But what confuses me is at the end, Madam Administrator, he puts fiscal year 2020 in there. So he like bills out the year, but then, so it was a little confusing.
But this is for us to make the decision. So, you know, he, this is not what we're being charged if we sign up, this is for us to make the decision. I personally support starting July 1. I don't think that we need to start in May or June, we don't have anything going on that would require an early start. The police and fire departments, both chiefs do want to exercise the option for the website, but I am not sure on this graphic design thing. And I believe that if they wanted that, there's money in their operating budget that they could absorb those costs if that came to be. So I don't think that, you know, you don't have to vote on that and include that, that's not a make or break. But I would like to, since, if you do believe and agree with my recommendation that we don't start until the next fiscal year anyway, I can request, based upon your feedback tonight, of what options you'd like to include, a more particular agreement and itemized list for the estimate from Mr. Gilfoyle, so that we can make a more educated conversation.
And what I would say is, the long form contract, with the total dollars included, and then as an addendum, the items you picked that total what the total contract is, and whatever the terms and conditions are. One of the things I wondered about was, if there was a major disaster, like when you said about a tidal wave coming up the Taunton River, and there are other communities who have this service, is he a one man show? How is he going to prioritize how he's going to?
He's not a one man show, he has various, I guess I can call them correspondents. I met another one that would be assigned to us. But they, yeah, there's a team, they can do a lot of work remotely. For something like a tidal wave, they would be here. But something simple, like a good positive, we're having a town governance committee, and we asked them to write a piece on it, they could do that from wherever they are in the world, which happens to be Georgetown.
A widespread event that could be something that would affect many. For example, if the flu had hit, the swine flu way back when, and it's a major issue, you would want them to speak for our emergency committee, because they certainly would do that. So that was a broad type thing, and I was trying to make sure that if people have to be prioritized, clients have to be prioritized, where would we on the list?
Right, where would we go, right. And I think, you know, he has an obligation to do us, right? I'm sorry, I don't really care about his other clients in the sense of, I want the service that I'm paying for. However, he has dealt with municipal clients for a very long time, and he does have a team of people doing it. So I wouldn't worry about that. And if we were having a press conference, we would make sure he would be on site. We might not be the only community having a press conference, but we would try to do it separately. And I think the news would want it to be separate as well, just because if they want to cover Berkeley and Dightons, they would need to be in two places at once, they wouldn't want to expend multiple people either for their services. So we would just schedule it, if that was ever a case. But let's not jinx a tidal wave coming from Taunton.
Is this something we ought to consider sharing with Berkeley, to get a contract for both?
I actually mulled over sharing services, I don't, they already use it with their fire, or they're getting it with their fire department, because something happened, a tragedy thing happened.
It crashed on 24.
I think that's what it, was it a school bus? Is that what it, yeah, so that's how he found out about it. He used Taunton, who had it through contract, and then decided that he was going to get it for himself in Berkeley. I don't think that we should do a regional thing, nor do I think it's a good practice for the company, because then you have to allocate, if Berkeley ends up using too many of their stuff, are they going to piggyback on ours? Because you only get six a month, so then we would get three, I don't.
Okay.
Not only that, if there happened to be a dispute between two towns, what do they know to report?
Right.
I can't vote on this anyway, like we can keep discussing it, but I don't even have a figure, there's like too many variables. I support just the website design, like I agree, they should be doing their job and not having to change the website, yeah. But I just need accurate figures, that's all.
Can you go through that, though, that you, what you want, so I can get an accurate estimate? So do you, like, my thought is, we don't need May and June of this year, we don't need the police and fire patches and the town seal. We actually got the town seal already, so we definitely don't need that. Can we do some of that, that you want me to?
The agreement itself, I'm troubled by the fact that the first line, this public relations agreement is made as of August 1st, 2015.
This is a sample, this is not for us. This is, you had asked what a sample agreement would look like, that's what I requested. So if that was wrong, that's my fault. But this is not for us to, I'm not requesting you to sign this.
No, but this isn't something that they gave us necessarily, and they made the error on the day.
That is something that they gave us, as a sample.
As a sample, okay.
Right, because there's even a cost in there of $30,000.
Yes.
So it's just a sample.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we take under advisement the public relations contract with John Gilfoyle, and authorize the town administrator to research the services that we need and the costs to determine exactly what we will contract for. We can give her guidance, obviously.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
So I have a question, do you want us to go over tonight, what you, give you an idea as to what we're looking for, or what we're not looking for in this?
It's up to you, if you want to just send me an email or have a quick conversation with me, I can do that too. I think I'm understanding what you want, and I have no problem saying this is what I thought, and you can tell me if I'm wrong or not.
I agree with what you said, I don't think we need May and June, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I know you want to take a vote. I agree, no May or June. I'm okay with the public relations package, the 8.99 per month with a one-year commitment. I'm okay with the police and fire websites, I'm just a little iffy on. I'm okay with the police and fire websites. I'm just a little iffy on the town news and events portal, because it seems like he's double-charging for things that appear in the proposal to be part of that. So I just need a little bit of clarification. But in general, I do support it. I just, it's a lot of money, and I think it might be used as a model, perhaps in the future, for the town as a whole, like, you know, other departments that are not police and fire. So I just, we need to get it right this time, and I need accurate figures. I apologize, Slakman Zogar.
I don't think she can, she will fine-tune, I'll call it, fine-tune the details, so we end up with something that we know, the services we want at the price we understand and we agree to pay. And we put this on a long-form contract with an attachment, which pretty much spells out exactly what we agree, that she submits to us and says, this is what I'm submitting for your approval, and we say, okay. So we tighten it up.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, no abstentions? It passes. So do you think you'll have something by our next meeting on this, or will it be later?
I always aim, I always aim for the next meeting, but as you just indicated, it is getting lengthy, so.
Okay, so we're going to go to new business. B, we've already discussed A, so B, accept donations of labor and materials for Easy Access Door Systems. I do want to ask, has the ADA coordinator been involved in this at all?
I'm sorry, on, oh, yes, okay. So we need a push button for the door at the police station. It is ADA compliant technically, but it's not really jiving with the position we have taken about ADA compliance. So what we did, and we, meaning Dennis McGee, thank you very much, Mr. McGee, he researched how we could fix that, what the costs would be. Easy Access is a company that we actually regularly use for our push button here at Town Hall. And this is the proposal he has provided to us. What would also be required is what I call ancillary costs with a little bit of construction and carpentry and some electricity stuff going on. And this gentleman, very graciously donated from Easy Access, is proposing to donate his labor materials for this, as long as the town covers the other two costs, which of course I believe that we would. We would, we were ready to pay for the whole thing. Mr. Gail, the ADA coordinator, has been notified. He knows where we are up to date right now. We're awaiting the price proposals of the other two vendors. Mr. McGee is working on that. And we're just here wondering if you will accept this donation.
We accept the donation. We don't need other proposals, unless they want to donate.
So unless they want to donate. But we need, so there's three people that need to do work for this door to happen, and the largest cost is our electrician, and then there's like another technical person that needs to come in in conjunction with that. So we, he, this gentleman from Easy Access can't say that he'll donate. So we would do those two, and then he's just saying, I'll donate my time and labor, labor materials, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So is the, I should have asked you this before, I apologize. Is the four thousand nine hundred nine dollar figure total here, given the amount of the donation?
Correct.
Okay.
I verified with the DOR that we could take this, by the way. I was concerned, but we can.
So they're donating the door and the labor that it would take to install this ADA-compliant system?
For his role in it. There are two other vendors that obviously he can't speak for, and they're not a part of this donation.
So there will be a cost. I guess I'm just trying to understand.
There will be a cost, but this won't be added to it, I guess. And it will be much less than this.
No, I understand. I just, I wasn't sure just from what was presented this evening, how that was going to work, so I appreciate that.
So you're looking for a motion to accept this donation?
Accept the donation, and I'd like to send a letter of thanks if.
Oh, absolutely. Are you entertaining motions? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the donation from Easy Access Door Systems in the total amount of four thousand nine hundred nine dollars for the furnishing and installation as provided in the proposal this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, no abstentions, it passes. New business, C, appointments. Zoning Board of Appeals, Peter Karen, Michelle Lehman. Did we get a response from the ethics board?
I, you know what, this is my fault. I forgot to follow up with Mr. Karen's, the both Mr. Karens. I apologize.
Are we comfortable with acting on the other appointment?
I'm comfortable acting on the other one, but I want to, I'm not comfortable in.
Oh, no, I agree, I agree.
Can you move this to our next meeting?
Mr. Karen, sure. And I, this is my fault. I did not follow up with him, and I apologize.
Michelle, is it Michelle Lehman? We can appoint that person?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll first make a motion that we defer to our next meeting the appointment of Peter Karen to the zoning board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, it passes.
And the purpose of that deferment is just to get information from the ethics commission on both Mr. Karens serving together. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Michelle Lehman to the zoning board of appeals as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it.
I think the next item is this memorandum. I could be wrong, Mr. Chairman.
And I just misplaced the rest.
It's from, regarding Mr. Woods, Serpent Commission Representative.
Mr. Ben V., who has recently, you know, did not seek reelection for Planning Board, served as our Serpent Commissioner. The Planning Board has nominated Mr. Robert Woods to now serve on that commission. That commission is, it's as the town's representative. It's a very important role in the sense that it helps keep us abreast of changes, and it also helps us push forward our own projects, such as the Pleasant Street Bridge or some other very important transportation project.
I think Serpide has been pivotal to so many different things that the town has done, from CCC to green communities, to MVP, to, yeah. They, they have been really pivotal, and I think this appointment is kind of crucial to the relationship between our ability to plan and our relationship with Serpide. So I'm happy to make a motion, if you're entertaining motions, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we appoint Robert J. Woods to represent the Planning Board as a Serpide Commission member from May 22nd, 2019 through May 22nd, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, I abstain.
And Mr. Woods wanted to be the representative, correct? Okay, just me, we don't want to appoint people that don't want to.
Well, I believe he agreed to the nomination at the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
He's not here. Is anything else we're not putting?
I know.
He's not here.
D, accept resignations. We received a resignation letter from Bethany Collins, RN. I'll probably read the letter, I guess. It is with regret that I must submit my resignation as town nurse effective June 30th, 2019. When I was hired a few years ago was primarily for two reasons. One was to represent the town at the monthly Region Five Emergency Preparedness Meetings. I have kept up with this to the present time, but since the board separated from the selectmen and hired more people, Roz and Todd have been attending these meetings as well. I have kept attending as nurse, as nurses play an important role in emergency preparedness. The second reason was to keep up with the reportable communicable diseases via Maven, which I, I'm not sure, is that a?
Maven is a program, like a.
Is an acronym for. Which I have kept up with diligently until recently due to the ever-increasing demands at home. I really enjoyed my time working with you all. I have been fortunate enough to be here at the birth of a separate Board of Health. The three people on that board are stellar. Then to see Roz come full-time and Todd at it as health agent has just been remarkable. Thank you for letting me serve you and the town sincerely, Bethany Collins. Well, we want to thank her for her service, and we have to have a motion to accept the resignation.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I so moved, with thanks and appreciation, of course.
And I will second that. Just a comment, Bethany, I enjoyed working with you when I was on the Board of Health. I know we attended meetings together. You were always there, very supportive, and I'm sorry to see you go, but thank you very much.
I just wanted to say briefly, Nurse Collins, we, we finally got you that computer, or laptop, last year that you fought so hard for. In all seriousness, though, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I thank you for all that you've done for the town. I do have one question to either of my colleagues or to the town administrator. Does that mean we will begin to search for a town nurse? Are they, they're going to fill this, try to fill this?
I was under the impression, oh, of course, we need to have one. I was under the impression that Ms. Collins actually had suggested a replacement, and I know the Board of Health is exploring that right now, so.
And then they'll make a recommendation to us?
Yes, and you'll affirm it. Yes, exactly.
And Ms. Collins, thank you for the, everything you've done for the town. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. We also received a resignation from James Di Aruda. Dear Karen, my appointment to the Historical Commission expires June 30th. I no longer wish to serve on that commission, so I am requesting that appointment be allowed to lapse. Thank you. Do we need to take any action on?
No, I was just going to say that. So this is a little misleading, and it's, you know, our fault for how we put it on here. He's just looking to not be reappointed, but I wanted you to know.
Yeah. I've worked with him. I'm on the Historical Commission. I've worked with him. He's going to be missed, his knowledge and experience.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we acknowledge the correspondence from James Di Aruda, and thank him for his years of service on the Historical Commission.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. We also received another resignation from the Historical Commission. You're going to wonder what's going on, huh?
I am, I am actually. Is this just coincidental?
It's, it's coincident. This was addressed to the chairperson of the Historical Commission. Dear Pat, as, after much soul searching, it is with much regret that I inform you of my need to resign from my position on the Dighton Historical Commission. It will be effective immediately. New commitments in my life necessitate that I reduce some of my activities. I would like to express my gratitude for having had the opportunity to serve the town of Dighton on this Historical Commission for the past four years. Joanne Racine. I've worked with her also. I, I work with her now as part of the Dighton Historical Society. I've worked with her on the commission. She worked very hard in trying to get the town to provide CPC funds for segregation across the street, although it wasn't successful, but she worked very hard on that, and she will be missed on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation of Joanne Racine from the Dighton Historical Commission with regret and thanks for her service to the town. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. I know that at the next Historical Commission's meeting, we'll be interviewing potential candidates for the.
Who's on the commission now?
We have two, we have two vacancies, and we're going to have a third one when Jim Di Aruda's position expires.
Oh, okay.
So we have two vacancies right now.
Is it a five-member board?
Okay, I think it's.
I can't, I thought it was seven, aren't they?
I think it's seven. I think it is seven.
I think it's seven.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, but Ms. Racine is still going to stay as a member of the Historical Society, correct?
Yes, this is the Historical Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Racine.
So we'll be interviewing, and we'll be submitting a second letter for the person who has submitted a letter of resignation, secretary. So we'll be submitting that soon, so we'll be asking the Board of Selectmen to fill those positions. And we also got a, another resignation. Dear Mr. Reins, this is for the CPC, Community Preservation Committee. Dear Mr. Reins, Mr. Reins is the chairperson of that committee. I understand running a committee is no easy task and requires active participation from the members. I must resign my commission as work continues to demand even work and travel. I appreciate what you do for the town. Joseph Tumarkin.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we accept the resignation of Joseph Tumarkin from the Community Preservation Committee.
With thanks.
With thanks and appreciation, that's all.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. Thank you again, Mrs. Tumarkin. E, approve vacation carryover request. We got a request from Chief McDonald regarding vacation carryover. I am requesting that I make carryover ten vacation days from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020, to our fiscal year 2020 fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions.
I am.
Of course. I make a motion that we approve the vacation carryover of ten vacation days from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020 for Police Chief Robert McDonald.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. We also got another vacation request. I am requesting I make carryover sixty-four hours of vacation from time from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020. Respectfully submitted, Colleen Borg.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the vacation carryover request of sixty-four hours of vacation time from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020 for administrative assistant to the Police Chief, Carlin Borg.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. The next item, ratification of executive order for Dighton Baseball One-Day Liquor License, rain date, May 11th. As you may know, I signed an executive order allowing them to have, I believe it was May 5th, but it was rained out, and now we want, I want approval of that. So it's going, it's now scheduled for May 11th. If you want to read the letter. The selectmen have previously granted a one-day liquor license for the Dighton Little League for May 5th at the Little League Complex on Maple Swamp Avenue in Dighton. Unfortunately, the forecast is awful for this Sunday, so we cannot hold our fundraiser and fundraiser as we had planned. We are asking that the town change the date of our permit to May 11th. Please place this matter on the agenda for May 8, 2019. If you need anyone from our organization in attendance, please let me know. They had originally submitted, it's too late for us to have it on the agenda for a previous meeting, so that's why I signed the executive order, so.
I have a procedural question. So do we have to vote to approve the original executive order with the amendment that it's going to be moved to May 11th?
So you need to affirm the, two votes, affirm the executive order and then allow, approve the one-day liquor license.
So I'm entertaining motions.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I approve that we, excuse me, I motion, well, that's presumptuous. I motion that we ratify, I believe is the correct word, the executive order signed by Chairman of the Board of Selectmen Kenneth Pachico for the, excuse me, one-day liquor license originally scheduled for May 5th, 2019.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Did we get the insurance certificate needed in the town?
We did, yes, we did.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the rain date for the Dighton Baseball League Incorporated event from May 5th, 2019 to May 11th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. Approve the year-end budget transfer from harbor master. So it's my understanding that we had given permission to hire a third person, but we didn't actually fund it.
Correct.
So he's asking.
This is still from his budget. He's just moving money from expenses to personnel.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the request for a transfer from the harbor master to transfer five hundred twenty dollars from account 010-295-70-5730, additional equipment into account, for the, excuse me, for the salary of an assistant harbor master in the amount of 010-295-50-5106 as requested.
I think we have a.
I'm going to second that. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. We have an issue. He's requesting five hundred dollars, five hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents. That first line, total amount requested to be transferred out, says just twenty dollars, but it is supposed to be twenty cents.
No, it's, I'm confused.
Five twenty, twenty, and twenty cents.
It says, oh, okay, you're right. You're correct. I had to scroll up.
If you would just correct that to read five hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents from those accounts, okay?
Thank you.
Out and then in. I apologize. Good catch.
And you seconded that already, right?
Correct, yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it.
This will head to the Finance Committee tomorrow for their meeting.
Agenda item H. A discussion and vote for request for fill use for BCAHS graduation.
Mr. Chairman, before I make a motion, and I'm happy to do so, I did just want to say, and I know Selectmen Goulart, I hope, will reflect my sentiments. I really, really appreciated the use of the Carl Spratt Memorial Field for the Aggie graduation exercise last year, minus the drone Selectmen Goulart, remember that? A little excitement, but it was really nice out there. I had never been when it was perhaps indoors, so I really only have the outdoor experience to go on. But it was very special, and I really appreciated it, and I really thought the. the public, and there was a lot of public, actually, really appreciated outdoor as well. And now with the new paving, we've reduced our liability, not that anything ever happened, but, and I think we can showcase that on top of the nice use of the field. Happy to motion, if you're entertaining motions, Mr. Chairman, to approve the Bristol County Agricultural High School's request to use the Carl K. Spratt Memorial Field for their graduation exercise on May 30th, 2019.
Second.
I do have a question. It says, open to the general public, and it says no, so what does that mean?
Ticketed event.
Ticketed event, okay.
So you have to have a graduate.
So I couldn't just walk there and?
I think they're gonna let you go.
Well, I believe, aren't you, are you not invited?
No, we are.
Yeah, you're invited, so you can go.
But actually, you know, because it's wide open, if somebody's out there sitting on the wall.
Yeah, you would never, yeah.
The only question I have is, have they given us this insurance certificate naming the town? Because he's made this statement, he has no authority to do that. So all we need is a copy of their insurance certificate, because these kind of agreements keep friends, good friends. When we did the Center Street sidewalk and the bridge project, we, in both cases, just got the insurance certificate to indemnify the county, so we're just looking for the reversal.
Sure.
So is that motion conditional?
Contingent upon receipt of the liability certificate, insurance certificate?
When we request it, it might be wise to say for Bristol County Agricultural High School activities, because the athletic field is used by the team.
Right, so we actually have an agreement that we need to get finalized and signed, but you're absolutely right.
But whoever their insurer is can just whip out that certificate, and it'll cover events.
Can do the one day.
Whatever events they have, that's my only concern. And I know that Mr. Bragg is sincere in what he said, but.
But I, I agree.
But from a legal standpoint, like, he can't do that.
No.
I like that.
And I will echo what Dr. Zee said. We had a wonderful time. I have attended inside once, and if you've ever gone to an Aggie graduation, it's a family event.
Oh, that's nice.
Those kids, they're family.
It was nice.
It is, really interesting.
Looking forward to it. So I did amend my motion, Mr. Chairman, to make the approval contingent upon the submission of the certificate, insurance certificate.
Second.
And you second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Aye. Approve the field use application for cruise night for Vietnam vets.
There was me just a moment. Mr. Chairman, I do see this certificate of liability insurance as well as all the appropriate sign-offs, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the request to use the area behind Town Hall for the cruise night event. There was me just a moment. On June 9th, 2019, by the Teen Butterflies of Hope. I apologize.
Oh, wait a minute.
No, no.
We're on the, we're on the cruise nights, so the dates for those are May 18th, 2019, June 22nd, 2019, July 27th, 2019, and August 24th, 2019. I understand there's usually no rain date, so if it rains, they just skip that one.
Would you just read those dates, please?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm gonna rescind my motion, which I, which was kind of half-thought-out. So I will make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Madam Administrator, to approve the request by cruise night, for cruise night, using the location behind Town Hall on the dates of May 18th, 2019, June 22nd, 2019, July 27th, 2019, and August 24th, 2019.
Second.
Thank you.
So they're having four nights then, because before they used to have June, July, and August, and now they're gonna have one in May.
They're gonna have a chicken barbecue, too.
Ooh, my stomach is rumbling.
I know.
They're all good.
The tickets are, I believe, $15.
And it benefits the town Vietnam vets.
Yeah, for their scholarship programs and other charitable works.
It's always a nice time. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. J, discussion of waiver fee for vote and vote for one-day entertainment license for Butterflies of Hope car show.
Mr. Chairman, I went to this event last year. It was awesome. My uncle, actually, and I didn't know this beforehand, was showing one of his cars there. It was a really special event. I did speak to the individual who I believe started Teen Butterflies of Hope, and they expressed to me how appreciative they were for the town to grant use of behind Town Hall for them to have the event, and I believe we did waive the permit fee for the entertainment, one-day entertainment application last year as well. So I support it. If you're entertaining motions, I'd like to make the motion.
Second.
Some moves. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. K, request from the Town of Berkeley Fire Chief to obtain surplus equipment. So we received a letter from, from the Berkeley Chief, Fire Chief, asking if he could, we've already voted that this is surplus.
Yes.
Okay. Dear Chief, this is addressed to Chief McGee. As per our conversation, Berkeley Fire and Rescue is interested in obtaining the 1991 American General M923 truck you have available as surplus equipment. I feel strongly that we can put this vehicle to good use. Please contact me should you need any further information. Scott Fornia, Chief, Fire Chief of Berkeley. Entertaining motions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Berkeley's use of the 1991 American General M923 five-ton cargo truck. I believe that's correct.
So not use, it's, we're giving it away. So we're disposing of it in the best interest of the town, usually, is you get money for it, but we're requesting that it go to Berkeley.
How would you?
Are we gonna donate this to the Town of Berkeley?
Basically, yes.
It's a donation? Okay, I rescind that. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow, approve the donation of the 1991 American General M923 five-ton cargo truck to the Town of Berkeley as outlined in the documents this evening.
Second. Any discussion?
No, I, so, as we know, I don't think the 1991, I don't think this vehicle is what we would call energy efficient, so we couldn't do it inter, you know, he couldn't give this, the chief couldn't, this couldn't happen for interdepartmental, but I'm okay with this tonight, because what else would happen with the car anyway?
We could just send it to scrap, and if somebody could use it.
It sounds like they can, and they're excited about it.
And they're on mutual aid partners, so that would be.
Yeah.
But does it go, does it go against green community for us to put this back in use?
We can only have policies in our own town, so it's not our policy.
So we can't, so that's.
Not our jurisdiction, yeah.
But if we denied it, then it wouldn't go on.
Correct.
Be sending out more pollution. I'm okay, I'm in favor of that. No, but that's.
No, I, I agree with you, but I'm, I would assume that if Berkeley, perhaps, I don't know their internal politics, if they could afford it, they probably already would have purchased it, so I'm okay to oblige on this one.
They might be taking it for pots, too.
Right.
So.
It may not be on the road, that's a good point.
Yeah, but the pots are gonna go to a, a vehicle that's polluting.
Fuel inefficient vehicle.
Any discussion? Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it.
Before we continue, Mr. Chairman, did we lose the WISP signs part? Because I'm getting a lot of documents over here.
I'm getting a lot of documents over here.
We had a few documents going back and forth over here.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So L, review warrant articles for annual town meeting. Now, for my clarification, are we gonna go over each article and take a position on it? I think we should, but not necessarily tonight.
Not tonight. Tonight's vote is to, what did I do with my? Is to decide to put on the warrant, and there's, I tried to give you this little cheat sheet, and I apologize that it's in different colors, so I'll take the different.
Is this what's gonna be posted?
Yes, so tonight you're deciding what we're going to post on the actual warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have a blown-up version. I've basically taken the money articles and put them on this sheet, and I've given you my recommendations on how we would fund them. Of course, this goes to town meeting, excuse me, the Finance Committee for their recommendations. They may not agree. This is how I'm trying to do the most good or accommodate the most requests. We do not have the funds to do all of them, so just, I want you to go forward thinking about what you want to put on the, on the warrant with that in mind. I did speak with the Finance Committee, and he said, well, even if you put something on there that you wanted the voters to determine whether or not to fund or not, and we didn't figure out all the funding requirements here tonight, that he, you know, they would either move to defer or figure it out, so it's certainly not make or break tonight, but I just wanted us to think about it and have the conversation. So these are just my quick recommendations. It does involve using all of the free cash, something that is not usually what we do and what we like to do. We have $241,000 left in free cash and a whole lot of projects to fund, some that are fairly dire, specifically the Millers Lane project, and expensive. So just for you to think about as we go forward, I am requesting something for town meeting for sewer expansion study, which we have discussed with the town, the Finance Committee, excuse me, about where that will come from. My recommendation is that it comes from free cash and not the sewer enterprise, because I do believe that it is an economic development item and initiative, but other people may disagree, so that's really something, but to talk about later.
Well, I'm gonna support that particular one either way, no matter where it comes from, but I am okay with FinCom asking the Sewer Commission, which is what they're gonna do, as we know from their meeting, to see if they are willing to pay it. I don't think they are, based on our conversations with them, but I do think this is important.
I'm okay with all, all of these going on, the warrant, let the townspeople decide how they want to vote. We can take our positions. I hope on May 22nd, we look at these and, and give recommendations or.
There is one, one article that did not make it into words on your document tonight, and I just want to call your attention to it. It should be on there for consideration. It is the $28,000 article for land-taking and easements on Somerset Ave and Pearl Street. My personal recommendation is to defer that to the fall because of some other projects that I think should take precedence over it. However, I ended up deleting it in my, in my Word copy, so I apologize for that. That should be on there, and just a reminder for you to vote on whether or not you want to place that on this warrant.
I have another question for you. Is that okay if I?
Well, let's kind of finish. Was it related to what, was it related to what she just said?
It was related to her wanting to defer. She had said that that was the only one, since you're requesting, thank you, Mr. Chairman, since you're requesting state funding for the Pleasant Street Bridge repair, are you also?
I removed that.
Want to defer that as well?
Yes, so that's really just to get it into everybody's mind that we do need to fund this bill, but by happy coincidence, I've received email communication from Representative Hadad's office, and they are going to try to put $650,000 to repair this bridge into the Governor's Streets Bill. No promises, but I'm not going to, if this is even a glimmer of a possibility, I don't feel right asking the town to fund it. I would like to wait and see if we can get some state funds for it, so I'm requesting that we just sort of skip over it, and if it needs to happen in the fall, it needs to happen in the fall, but we don't have to do it right now.
Mr. Chairman, I agree that we should, we will let the people decide. I totally agree, but given what the town administrator said, are we okay as a board not putting the Pleasant Street Bridge repair or the land-taking easements on Somerset Ave and Pearl Street on the warrant for town meeting?
I'd like to defer also to Selectmen Goulart.
If we put them on, then there's no motion.
Okay.
Because then we show that this is something that we need to do, but we just, there's no motion, because there's no money. And I'm, you know, I'm thinking of with the information you got from the Rep's office, this bill that the Speaker of the House is proposing that isn't written yet, there's a possibility there's money in there. So.
Well, and also Pleasant Street Bridge, I like for the MVP stuff and the action grants. Pleasant Street Bridge has a lot of opportunities, so I'm, I think that we should actually take that off. I don't think we should put it on.
One of the things that Mr. Ferry and I were talking about, we were trying to figure out Millers Lane the other day, was that the money for the land-taking for Pearl and Somerset Avenue, that's all part of Complete Streets. So if you put it on the warrant, but then you don't have a motion on it, at least you showed if you had the money, you would have done it then. So by not making a motion on it, we can defer it till September, but we have evidence that we are pursuing both the bridge and the money for that. That's what we were talking about, because what Mr. Ferry said, you're showing that you, you're making a good attempt to do it, it's just we don't have the money right now.
I, I agree with you in part. I guess my concern, well, I actually agree with you in total. My concern, though, is putting that on there, I think my concern is some people might come out and be upset that we're spending, and we're not gonna motion, I agree with you. I certainly wouldn't, but it might, maybe it'll allow other people in their minds to want to not spend on other items with that one in mind, because it's such a high amount. I have no issue with keeping, you know, land-taking, that's $28,000. It's, it's piddling in comparison to the $500,000 item, so I don't want to alarm anyone. I understand your strategy, so if the board decides we're gonna keep it on the warrant and not make a motion, I'm okay with that, too, but I'm, I'm just concerned about it affecting downstream, other things that we do need to fund now.
Right, I'm concerned about that as well, and I also, I really feel strongly that if I have multiple, if we have multiple avenues to explore funding for Pleasant Street Bridge, I don't want to go, I don't want the town thinking that we're gonna go right to town meeting and request funding. I want them to know that we are very active, and we are, this is like real, we are very active at looking for other sources of funding. So on that one, I, like, land-taking for the Somerset Ave and Pearl Street, the Finance Committee, that's not a large sum that can't come out of free cash, so the Finance Committee might decide to fund that. And that also goes and coincides with our conversation about Complete Streets, where the state actually wants us to look at that we have funded it, and that that's how we get more favorable review for Complete Streets, and that's not a killer sum, that's something.
Initially, we were talking $200,000 for Complete Streets, but then with the other things we got, we took that out completely, but that was, that was another thing that Mr. Ferry said. You're showing that you're trying to do this. You're making a good faith attempt.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, how do you feel about Pleasant Street Bridge in particular?
Well, I think it needs to be repaired, but.
Me, too. You want to pay for it, though?
I think both of you make valid positions, however, I do agree with yours, that by putting it on, the people are gonna look at it and say, so they want to spend $500,000, I'm not gonna vote for this thing, I'm not gonna vote for that thing, so I'm in favor of not putting Uh, so I'm in favor of not putting it on the, uh, the warrant. It may very well have to go before the, uh, the town at some point, but not right now.
The only other thing I would say is, in the course of discussion on these articles, we can say, there's an article here for five hundred thousand. There will be no motion on that tonight because we are gonna pursue state funding, and it's on there because we just, we have a record that we have made a good faith attempt. We just don't have the money to do it, so that was my only comment there.
I have a really open side message.
But I'm, am I correct, and I don't anticipate this happening, but if we put it on, they can't, someone get up and make that motion?
Well, then that's my other concern.
Yeah, but then you need a majority to, you need a second and.
I don't picture it happening. It's five hundred thousand dollars. I can't picture somebody getting.
A calamity that's avoidable, in my mind. That's how I'm thinking about it.
I do respect your opinion, but I.
Absolutely.
The FinCom would recommend an incident.
Yes, and we would recommend. Can't sit through.
After Ed fell out of his chair.
I know. Um, so if you look at the written words, um, I think all the way through Article twelve are what I call housekeeping, um, housekeeping items that we do every year. And just to know, Article nine is your Chapter ninety. We are receiving three hundred and two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two, uh, anticipated to receive that through the Chapter ninety bill.
I have a question from my colleagues regarding, um, the ple, ju, bridge repair in general. Let me back up. Or the town administrator as well could answer. Um, community preservation funds.
Yes.
Preserving a br- bridge doesn't fall under that.
Unless there's something special about the bridge.
Okay, like a histor, okay.
Right, or that, you know, it served as some, you know, old footpath, uh, that kind of thing. But this bridge, this bridge, uh, is one foot too long for the small bridge program.
One foot?
And it's not special enough, one foot, not special enough to qualify, so.
No, we're gonna take something.
Governor's Streets Bill it is.
And CPC is asking for a lot of money to be spent, so I'm not sure how much money they're gonna have left over for something like this, so.
Uh, so if that actually, we go right into the CPC articles. The CPC articles, we are in the process of, um, just confirming map and lots and square footage, so take these a little bit with a grain of salt, but what is correct is the funding, um, amounts. The CPC did have their hearing last night. Uh, myself and Chairman Pacheco were in attendance, and they voted, um, let's see, unanimously, I think it was unanimous, for the North Titan Playground, the electrical panels for the Titan Housing Authority, and the, uh, Brook Street property. And there were some just discussions and disagreement on the boat ramp and the Broad Cove Land. Uh, so that's where that starts, they are, stands there.
They all, yes, everything was approved.
Everything was approved, but those two items were not unanimous and sparked some con, uh, discussion. Um, and again, I do, we, we just need to, uh, confirm map and lot, square footage, but we'll be working on that. That doesn't change anything from going on here. Um, the planning board is looking for a copier. The, myself, I am looking for seventy-five thousand dollars for the sewer study. Again, um, I would like this to be free cash because I think that the whole town can benefit, but.
Don't we have two, we have two new copiers up here?
This is a plan copier, so it's about the size of this table, and you take the actual builder plans and you can rule them in. So it's a specialized copier.
I didn't know that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I gotta tell you, when I've had to have plants copied at Staples, it's not cheap. They've got those gigondas things, so you end up with the same size.
I wasn't sure if it was just an extra copier that, because it is inconvenient, like I get walking up and down stairs.
Well, also you can scan, which is very helpful, bec, and then print out scanned files. So right now, if I get a CAD file from a surveyor, it's really useless for me in the sense of I can't print it out. I can look at it, but printing it out is a troublesome thing, so, uh, that's what they are requesting for. The fire department is, um, excuse me, police and fire, they're looking to put in active shooter kits in each of the, um, cruisers. So that's eighteen thousand, six thousand dollars for six new patrol rifles and accessories. Um, the police department's requesting a new cruiser. The animal control officer is requesting a vehicle. The highway superintendent is requesting two vehicles. One is a six-wheel dump truck with sander and plow. The other is a one-ton pickup truck. Both vehicles would be replacing current vehicles that are in, um, bad need of repair.
And they're very old.
And they're very old. Um, Article twenty-seven, this starts our Miller's Lane project, so we have our legalese, you know, that we're legally allowed to start doing some land takings. The second one is the funding mechanism for such land takings, so that's twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
May I make a comment, Madam Administrator, about the, uh, ACO vehicle? I know fifty thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money, but that vehicle has needed to be replaced. The current vehicle owes us nothing. Um, so that is very necessary.
The reason the eight-foot bed matters is because, if you remember, we received, we purchased for, uh, not a lot of money on surplus from another community, a cap for the bed so that the back of the truck would be climate-controlled, um, which is something that we do not currently have.
But that is, as I understand.
So that's why the eight-foot bed is there. I'm sorry.
But that is something that's like state, we're like not complying with whatever the current state. We might be grandfathered in, but that's something that we should, we should boost up.
And am I, uh, correct in saying that these have to be energy-efficient vehicles?
This would not, uh, right, it would not be a exempted vehicle.
It would have to be energy-efficient. But it would be judged on whatever model, you know, it would be like it has to omit like a smart car and be a van or anything like that.
Um, Article twenty-nine, uh, I, this is where I would insert that twenty-eight thousand for the, the Somerset, Somerset Street, excuse me, Somerset Ave and Pearl Street, my goodness, um, money, that's, that's where I would put on the warrant, that article.
Can you say that one more time, Madam Administrator?
I, I had neglected to put on the Somerset Ave, Pearl Street, land-taking fund, um, request for funding. And that's, and Complete Streets, so that's where I, I would put it right there after the Miller's Str, Miller's Lane project.
That would become thirty?
It would become Article twenty-nine, and then the current Article twenty-nine would be the William Street. And then, again, so that's William Street Drainage Issues. Tom is very busy. Article thirty is, um, Veterans' Expenses.
I'm sorry, before we move on, no, 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 it's okay. I should have asked this earlier. Is the twenty-eight thousand is part of Complete Streets? Was, I apologize if I missed this, was an appraisal done? Like, how does that figure?
We are very far along in that project. We were ready to be funded by Complete Streets and did not get funded. And one of the items, uh, that we got back for feedback was that we didn't ourselves have any money to put up against it. So we're trying to show that we're actively working on these projects.
I locked those because they're confidential. They're all in the drawer, locked behind my desk.
Thank you.
So we can go through?
Thank you, Selectman Goulart.
And, um, actually, thanks to Selectman Goulart on that project in general. She's been, uh, very helpful. Um, so anyway, that's, that's twenty-eight thousand and thirty-five dollars. Okay. Um, this Article thirty on your sheet, which would now be Article thirty-one, is the Veterans' and/or Surviving Spouses Tax Exemption for local property tax.
And what exactly is that?
If you're a veteran, you receive a tax break.
It's relative to your income, too.
So it's just a benefit for you. I'm not sure the exact figure, but, um, it is something I support because.
I have to tell my dad about that.
And then the last remaining articles, so thirty-one through thirty-five, or, excuse me, thirty-four are bylaws. One is to, uh, revamp the kennel bylaw to address some issues that we've had, uh, over the last couple of years, over the last year or so. And then the other are submitted by the planning board, some of which the changes are simply to correct numerical issues, um, so not major at all. But they do have to have a public hearing at least two weeks, or before, um, town meeting. So it will be, it will be advertised for them, and the public can weigh in then.
Are they gonna do it all at once in the Board of Health? So they have three, I believe, planning has three.
Yes.
Things that they're submitting. They would do it all as one public hearing, right? Okay, and then the Board of Health would do the, the kennel bylaw. Thank you.
So the only one that requires the actual public hearing are zoning bylaws, and those are the three presented by the planning board. The kennel bylaw does not necessarily require a public hearing on it. Um, it will be posted as part of.
Has been, usually we, you do them anyway. Okay, I understand. It's not required.
So it'll be posted, and then again, um, when you're making your motion to decide, please just don't forget, um, that I had a, I neglected, I omitted, um, the land-taking easements on Somerset Ave, so please just consider that when you're making your motion.
For clarification, we're voting tonight just to put the items.
On the warrant.
On the warrant.
And which ones?
Right, and on May twenty-second, we're gonna review these warrants individually and take a position.
And we will know the funding sources from the Finance Committee because they will have had their meeting.
So when does this go to print? So if we.
We have to post it by the sixteenth, and then we send it out to print, and it, is it two weeks before? I mean, uh, a week before a meeting it's delivered?
So will the public know what opposition, you know how they have the Finance Committee recommends, why, that kinda stuff, will it?
They will have, they will have Finance Committee, but they will not have the Selectmen.
And why is that? Because?
Because you don't have a meeting in time before the sixteenth.
I'm disappointed in that, so.
What is the date tonight? The eighth?
Eighth, yeah.
Why couldn't we meet next week and just discuss that?
Do we po, do we print both recommendations on the warrant?
And I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman.
I think the Finance Committee ones are on there, but the Selectmen ones have not been since I've been here. Since I've been here, they haven't been.
Yeah, but why wouldn't it be then?
No, they were. The Board of Selectmen recommendations were absolutely on articles on that last meeting we had in March.
In March on a special, because we can create that, and that was very simple for us to, to put out, but on the annuals.
Because, because.
We send that out printed, yeah. We send that out to a printer.
Got you.
And, um, the lead time, we haven't, and since, I mean, if, unless that's a practice you need, you want to start, I need to just be aware of that so I can schedule things differently.
Even if it doesn't go on, um, the actual, uh, warrant that gets mailed to the houses, Mr. Chairman, I think we should make, uh, in personal opinion, and I'm not saying I want an extra meeting, Lord knows I don't, but, um, I would like us to make our recommendations known before those individuals start getting the, uh, warrant in the mail and reading them. I think that's important.
I think it is.
Um, no matter which way the cookie crumbles, whether we support things or not.
Well, we could probably do them in blocks. You know how Mr. McKeon goes through the budget parts, and if no one has objections to these? So we could say, you know, um, I mean, the budget's kind of set, but if, for the special articles, we could just say, article such-and-such is X dollars for this, Selectmen support, or Selectmen don't support, and just whip right through them at a, at a meeting.
I think having a separate meeting and not tonight, we're not ready to, I don't think, make it.
Oh, no, no, I'm not ready to.
Because I wanna see what the Finance, I wanna see what the Finance Committee says tomorrow night. I wanna see what they have.
Right.
For funds, because already we're four hundred thousand dollars over the, uh, the levy. They think they might get that money from the ambulance, probably. I wanna see how it all, so.
Yeah, no, not tonight, but.
Shall we meet then? Unfortunately.
Next week, Mr. Chairman, in our off week.
I'm okay with that.
If my colleagues are amenable. I know everyone has schedules.
Right now, I'm not gonna be around next week, so, but if you guys wanna meet, go ahead.
You, you're okay with us meeting then?
Selectman Goulart, your opinion is very valuable. Is there a way that you could get to the town administrator? Of course, because we don't wanna violate open meeting law. Your opinions on each, and we're happy to read that.
Mrs. Brady, if you give me a clean copy of the warrant, um, uh, next to each article, I'll just put, okay, or don't agree, or table, or, and then she can tell you. Yeah, I can do that.
And we'll mention that at our meeting, representation.
Every, for every article, absolutely.
What time next week do people wanna, uh, I'm okay with six. It's just that, you know, I mean, this, we're putting another, we've, tonight we're putting two meetings, extra meetings for you, so.
So that's fine. Um, I'm fine with that. I'm probably going to try to pull some of the stuff we have for May twenty-second lightly, of course. Um, on the fifteenth.
And maybe you can move that to the twenty-ninth and put a space in there on the twenty-second, if you don't have something that has to be done. Right now, we, we're on for the twenty-second, but if you pull some stuff up to the fifteenth, maybe you can skip the twenty-second and go to the twenty-ninth. If it will help you schedule.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking about the twenty-ninth is that it's Memorial Day, and maybe people go away. Yeah, a lot of people are off that week.
Because it's like a full day.
So I was trying to avoid that, but I have no problem meeting on the fifteenth.
And then if there are things that you.
Thank you, though. I appreciate that.
If there are things, and you're amenable to this, to my colleagues, um, on the twenty-second that you feel can be moved to the fifteenth? I don't know if that's something the chairman wants. They set the agenda.
I'll keep it late, but some of the things.
You gotta take into consideration, Mrs. Goulart, will not be attending, so.
So we might want to.
We value everybody's opinion on.
But for not, maybe non-controversial things or things that may not require much of a discussion, we, we would be, I'm happy to entertain those things.
I hope you don't get me more resignations.
Yes. I don't know what we've done.
We had a bumper crop to them.
I know.
Mass Exodus was the term I used. Um, but are my colleagues okay with that? Like, like, um, tidying up stuff?
Yeah.
Yes, there's.
You know, so we don't, I would never.
Mrs. Goulart's okay with it, but she won't be here.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. I don't have a problem.
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna meet next week. I prefer a six. Is that okay with you?
That's, yep, five-thirty, six, whatever you want.
Five-thirty's okay with me.
Okay, oh, that was quick.
I'm retired, so.
Can I request six? I'm sorry. I made a meeting with the Cable Committee for five-thirty on, um, Wednesday, so. Sorry, guys.
That, that's fine, so we're gonna meet next. We don't need a motion on that, or do we?
No, I mean, no. We're all, yeah, not having any. Um, okay, so voting on the warrant, however, does need to occur, so.
Which article number is, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is the Pleasant Street Bridge repair?
It's not on here. I took it off.
Oh, you took it off?
I took it off, and I didn't, um.
But, and that was the only thing, Mr. Chairman, um, and to my colleague Selectman Goulart, are you wanting, can I just make a motion that we approve the warrant as, approve the warrant as prepared this evening?
With adding the article for land-taking and easements on Somerset Ave and Pearl Street.
I'm sorry, to Article twenty-nine. Um, are you entertaining motions?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, that we approve the warrant as prepared this evening with an added article, Article twenty-nine, which would shift all the ones, the new Article twenty-nine for the twenty-eight thousand thirty-five dollars, um, for land-taking easements on Somerset Ave and Pearl Street as part of our buy-in, if you will, for the Complete Streets program.
That's second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, just with all these changes, so we, the total number of articles on this warrant are now?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay, fine.
I think that's comparable to what we had the last annual town meeting in June, which was two nights, if we all recall.
Yes.
Some of these are no-money items, too, so they're gonna move right along.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. Now regarding the special town meeting.
Okay, there are no money articles on this, but, uh, you do need to take a few perfunctory votes. Um, you need to vote to open the warrant, close the warrant, accept what we've prepared on the warrant, and, um.
All separate motions?
Sign them both. You can do, yes, basically. Um, so before we talk about it, would you like to please vote to open the warrant for the special town meeting of June third?
I'm entertaining motions.
So.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Okay, we have a handful of articles. These are, um, truly cleanup articles, and, uh, I do owe an apology to the town accountant. We need to rescind a couple votes from establishing the revolving fund, um, revolving fund for, um, the Council Oak Lands Management. We're going to do something a little bit different. So, um, thank you to Jen for also figuring out the different thing we're gonna do. So the first one is to hear reports of town officials. That's, um, pretty normal. The second one is to rescind that vote establishing the, uh, revolving fund under the control of the Conservation Commission, which was part of what we did on the special town meeting of March twenty-eighth. This does not in any way affect our land agreement or anything that's going on. This is basically, um, voting on certain accounts in the town, um, so really kind of a legal thing. So that's the first rescinding vote. The other vote to rescind related to that is rescinding the upper limit that we established. So we had a couple of votes in March. We're just gonna rescind those same two votes. The, the Article four.
Madam Administrator, that there wouldn't be an annual limit anymore?
There wouldn't be an account, so there's no annual limit. It's a procedural, right.
Thank you.
So then Article four is what we're going to do, and we're adopting a proviso of Chapter forty, Section three that is allowing, um, this account, it actually provides a little bit more flexibility for us, so it's a happy thing to do, a good thing to do. Um, it allows us to accept the funds coming in and utilize those funds for maintenance and upkeep for the property or any other similar property. So the Conservation Commission can take those monies and build one of those platforms or do some other thing if, um, there were no requirements needed for the land that's being farmed. So that is what Article four is all about. Article five, we travel back in time to October fifteenth, where we need to rectify what's going on with the animal shelter. So originally, the funds for the animal shelter, we had twenty-five thousand come from the state. We, we opted to match at twenty-five thousand. The motion was specific that that twenty-five thousand from the town would be used to renovate fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue for the animal shelter. We'd like to assure you that so far, the work on the animal shelter, the funds used are only the state, and our amended scope was accepted, so we're fine there. But we do need to rescind that portion that designated the transfer, uh, the.
Old police station.
Old police station would be the animal shelter, thank you. And that the funding now be authorized to renovate those trailers and that we moved it, it's a, I said forty-eight. I, I'm making up addresses. I don't know where this came from. Um, eight-twenty-one Tremont Street, um, is one of the addresses we use over there. So it's on that side of the lot, so that's what I picked, um, as the animal shelter, if you so desire to put that on. The next one is, I don't know if you want to do that, that's what, what we're gonna do with fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue. We all got together and realized that it wasn't suitable for an animal shelter, which is the reason for our change in, in moving the trailers over. Do we demolish it? And I'm told that we have the equipment that we can do it in-house, so we wouldn't necessarily need the funds. But I don't know if that's what you want to do, so this is on here for you to tell me what to do.
And I supported it, but I know Selectman Goulart had reservations.
When I met with, uh, Mr. Ferry, and the fire chief, too, until he gets on his wish list a facility that houses his equipment, he would like to open up the bays again and use it to store equipment to get it out of the weather, because if you get it out of the weather, it lasts longer. And his concern is he's got equipment sitting outside because he's got no place to store it. Then, once, I mean, storage space in town's a premium, no matter where you go. And then, once the, we can move ahead with these other things, um, then the town will have something if they wanna take it down, but it's got electricity, it's got water. He doesn't really need anything. Um, and if you look where the trailers were connected, you can almost see two bays. Because it was a big, it was a big garage, so that was, that was his concern, that he could actually find a use for it temporarily. None of us wanna hang on to this thing forever.
So my, my, my concern is, is the amount of insurance now we're gonna be paying to keep that building, because it's in a flood zone.
That's, I, I agree with that. My other concern is.
Yeah, but it's already insured in a flood zone.
I know, but we're gonna continue.
To pay it.
Pay it. Once we knock the building down, we're not paying that insurance.
My other concern is just like the utilities. I, I'm not, I did vote to agree to the demolition. However, given what I've heard tonight, I think we should, in personal opinion, keep the article on. Let the people decide if they wanna pay for the insurance and. My other concern is just like the utilities, I, I'm not, I did vote to agree to the demolition, however, given what I've heard tonight, I think we should, personal opinion, keep the article on, let the people decide if they want to pay for the insurance and the electricity and the whatever for a building that's really just gonna be used as storage, I think that's important to let people decide that, um, I'm okay with keeping it on there.
And am I under the correct assumption that we have the ability, we have the ability to do this, so I'm not looking for any funding for this, because I'm under, we can just do it.
An authorization, correct.
Right, okay.
So where is, I mean, there's gonna be some expenses, getting rid of the materials and stuff.
Operating, they would.
And getting rid of the materials, what's that?
Well, we would put that on, uh. That would just go in the transfer station, well, something to look at, yep, um, let me make a note on that. Well, and in this, I've spent all the free cash anyway, so, I don't know where we fund it, um, this is a miss, a typo, it's Article seven, this is another rescinding the vote, back in June fourth, two thousand eighteen, we looked at a community preservation article, and we inadvertently accepted, by virtue of the language of the article, we accepted two hundred and seven thousand dollars to be provided to the state, and so because we did that, we have to put it in a certain form for the D O R, but it looks like we are owing two hundred, like, we don't, we, we're supposed to account for two hundred and seven thousand dollars that is not in our possession, because it's not our money, it's not supposed to be in our possession. So in order to get a better recap sheet and one that actually reflects what's going on, we are requesting the town to rescind the vote on Article fifteen in its entirety, and the following article removes that two hundred and seven thousand and gives it a nice clear vote that we, the Town of Dayton, are responsible for Town of Dayton funds being paid to this agricultural preservation restriction, and that the state would be responsible for their funds, and it wouldn't show up on our finances, if I, I hope I explained that clearly, um, so that's what Articles seven and eight are, um, true Article seven, Article eight, and then Article nine is to, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Can I just make a comment? No, no, it's okay, Madam Administrator, I am becoming a little concerned with us having to keep come, coming back to voters and rescinding votes, it does make it look a little bit like.
We, yes.
What were we voting on originally, so I, I hope that we get this squared away, it's not all us, right?
So, no, it's, it's not us, so Article two and three regarding Council Oak Land Management, we operated under the advice of Town Council, and it turned out that it wasn't really passing muster with D O R, not a horrible problem, um, but we're fixing it up so that we have nice neat books, we have a very strict town accountant, and she likes things neat, and I can't blame her, and, um, we're just tidying up. The language in the Community Preservation Commission, which the chairman of that commission used language from another town, just the word except of this funds sticks it into the coffers of the Town of Dayton legally, but we, it's not our money, and we're not getting it, so we can't balance our books out, because it looks like we're missing two hundred and seven thousand dollars when we're not supposed to hold it anyway.
No, I totally understand, I didn't.
So it's silliness, and I, and I know that it's, it's embar, trust me, it's embarrassing to have to go back to the town.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get at, if we could, you, you mentioned Town Council earlier, personal opinion, if there was ever a question of something that D O R, um, might weigh in on, or they might think a certain way about, I would hope that those people are going back, but not just making a legal opinion based on what has happened in other towns, but going back to the entity that's gonna weigh in on it, like D O R, and, and doing that before it goes on a meeting, and then realizing it gets approved, and then, oh, there's a problem with the process. Um, so just a little bit of, and again, it's not all us, these, some of these articles are from other volunteer committees, so I get it, um, but we always want to have co, the confidence of the voter who's voting on things that we have approved to be on the warrant, so in that way, I do feel a little bit like, oh, we, we were culpable as well.
Well, that's what I thought I was doing by getting a legal opinion on that, because there was disagreement, and, um, our legal opinion was incorrect, so we're fixing that, and then the other things about rescinding votes on fifteen fifty-one Somerset Avenue, life happens, and we made a better, a decision to better use the fund, so I agree with you, I under, I totally agree with what you're saying about having to go back to the town, um, the other, the last one of going back to the town is actually a good thing, because we borrowed too much, right?
It's a good problem to have.
So, uh, the town authorized the Town of Dayton to go out to borrow for a certain amount, and it came in lower, so again, to clear our books, we are asking to rescind a certain portion of that.
What is that for?
The police station. I think the warrant article, this is coming from the town accountant, because it, it, again, it looks like on our sheets that we have extra borrowed of, uh, extra money borrowed that we did not expend, so we're just rescinding the authorization.
The only thing I'll say about Articles six and seven, and I agree with, uh, Dr. Z as far as try to get it right the first time, in all the years I've lived in this town, I can think of this happening once before, and it was so long ago that we had some land put into an agricultural trust, I mean, a long time ago, and it was put in jointly with us in the city of Totten.
Does it still exist? Do we still have that?
Once you, once you put land in trust, uh, yeah, it was put in trust, it's the old, the old Divine or Dairy Brothers Farm, what used to be the Mount Hope Farm.
Oh, okay.
On, uh, what is that? Well, in, in our town, it's, um, is it Summer Street?
Summer Street, I was just gonna say that.
In Totten, it's South Walker.
Oh, yeah, that's beautiful, it's beautiful.
But that land was, that was put in years, I think, I think we were still meeting at the old Dayton High School, that's how long ago that was.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Any further discussion on this?
So I just need a vote to close the warrant, and then you'll.
I'm entertaining motions.
Um, go ahead.
No, Selectman Gulart.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the warrant for the special town meeting on June third, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, objections, the ayes have it. So we're supposed to be signing, are we supposed to be signing?
Well, now we need to vote on the special town meeting.
So, you need to vote on the special town meeting, and then I'm gonna ask you to vote to sign both of them.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you're entertaining motions, I motion, uh, that we approve the special town meeting warrant, uh, as prepared this evening.
Tuckin.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, objections, the ayes have it. I'm entertaining motions.
No, that was it.
Um, no, to, uh, sign the annual town meeting warrant and the special town meeting warrant.
I thought we just signed it.
No, no, we proved it.
I mean, I thought we.
We proved that we didn't sign.
So, um, uh, so moved, uh, on the, I make a motion that we, um, vote to sign the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, objections, the ayes have it.
I make a motion that we sign the warrant for the special town meeting.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, objections, the ayes have it. Correspondents, so it's nice to see that we don't have people resigning, that we got, we got some promotions, so we got a correspondence from the, uh, Fire Chief, it is with, uh, dear board, it is with great honor and pride, I am writing this letter to inform you that effective on May fifth, two thousand nineteen, I am promoting the following, the following personnel to the following ranks with the Fire Department. Full-time Lieutenant Christopher Ready to Captain, full-time firefighter Joseph White Junior to Lieutenant, full-time firefighter Thomas Majeris to Lieutenant, Call firefighter Samuel Pires, Pine Junior to Lieutenant, Call firefighter John Hathaway to Lieutenant. These personnel bring a great deal of experience, knowledge, and training to these positions, the service they provide to this department is an asset to this town and to me, I look forward to continuing to work with these fine personnel in the future, please join me in congratulating these dedicated members of the Fire Departments, I speak for everybody, uh, we're very pleased and happy with these promotions, I don't think we have to take a vote on it, uh, all are good people, all are good, uh, workers for our town.
We, we need to take a vote as far as, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the promotions in the Fire Department as read, and congratulate the five individuals who have been promoted to rank, in rank.
I happily second that, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Yep. Announcements, the, uh, Dayton Historical Society is having a plant sale, I want to point out to the public that I am a member and an officer of the Dayton Historical Society, it is a non-paid decision, they're having a plant sale on May eighteen, two thousand nineteen, from nine to two P M, rain or shine, it's at the Winslow Davis Museum at twelve seventeen William Street, Dayton, Mass. Uh, stop by to get your plants for your garden, if you have any plans to donate, we would appreciate it. A reminder that, uh, the town will be picking up, uh, bulky items curbside, the Board of Health has scheduled an annual bulky item pickup during the week of May twentieth to May twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, we'll be following the same schedule as trash pick, trash pickup, bulky items must be out no later than seven A M to follow, items may be curbside for pickup and disposed, I believe this is all on our website, all this information here, so. There are fees for, uh, different items, and that's available, if you have a refrigerator, please remove the door. Uh, the Memorial Day Parade this year, which is May twenty-seventh, will be in Rehoboth, begins at ten-thirty, uh, and the Dayton Rehoboth High School Golf Tournament will be held Monday, June seventeenth, at Crestwood Country Club, contact Kathy Amorall at five oh eight two zero eight nine seven four eight for more information. There are vacancies on the following boards, the Trail Committee, zoning Board of Appeals, the Governance Committee, Soil Conservation Commission, Land Use Committee, Bylaw Committee, C P C for an at-large member, Selectman's reports, I have nothing to report.
Are there vacancies on the Historical Commission too?
We get two resignations.
And Historical Commission.
I just know that there were two, already two applicants that were going to be, uh, interviewed on a, a next meeting next week.
You might get three.
Yeah, sure.
I'm just joking, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Selectman's reports, I have nothing to report.
I just want to mention the competition, St. Nicholas is having a plant sale this coming Saturday.
Well, this Saturday?
Yes, uh, the kitchen's open, uh, they'll be open, I, the, uh, sale is from, I believe, nine to two, and the kitchen will be open.
So if you can't make it that day, the following week, the Dayton Historical Society will have an appliance sale also.
So, it, it, same thing, plants and things like that.
We're not having food.
On the Selectman's report, I just got a couple of quick things that came up today, um, one of our guest speakers was, um, Nick Corners, Director of Green Communities for, from D O E R, um, and he was talking about the, again, he got into all the discussions, we were talking about the, this proposed legislation from, uh, the Speaker of the House, called Green Works Resilient Communities Investment Plan, um, and he's talking about funding it through a trust fund, there was discussion also about taking some money from the Registry of Deeds fees that they want to raise, so that we can get more money for C P C, so that's my question about the competition, that doesn't sound too good, um, there was a, we had two, two proposals, they wanted us to support federal legislation that would affect, um, burning trash for energy, and then burning wood products for energy, and we had somebody there from the Sierra Club, and I said, I don't believe this is, you're, we don't want them cutting down trees to generate energy, and we're gonna, I said, I've got two concerns, number one, most of southeastern mass sends their trash to, uh, Rochester, it's incinerated, so if they're gonna change the law on that, we need to know about it, because there's so many communities. And the other thing was, I said, uh, Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School actually has a boiler that's fired with wood chips, but my understanding is they're not up in Maine cutting down the forests, they are, uh, chips from, if you will, scrap wood or what you can't make lumber from, uh, so I said, I really would like to have more information before this board votes to support this, and, uh, the man sitting next to me was, he's the town administrator for Palmer, and he says, I agree with her completely, he said, what they're asking us to do is not clear and it's too broad, so, um, those were, those were the other things that came up of the, other than the ones that I already mentioned to you.
I do have one brief thing.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I did, I had the pleasure for the second year in a row of, um, being one of the behind-the-scenes judges, I guess, um, for the handing out of the D R marching band scholarship, um, I got to do this with the new, uh, Rehoboth Board of Selectmen Chairman, I know, Selectman Gulart, grab your chair, Mr. Vadney is no longer the chairman, it is, uh, Mr. Jerry Schwal, um, and he was there, as was Dr. Tench, uh, from the school district, it was very nice, um, we always enjoy that meeting, I always think, I like to think it goes a long way towards, um, you know, having a, a nice diplomatic relationship with Rehoboth, um, so it was very special, and at the, uh, celebration of excellence, we should have a couple, uh, seniors graduating from the D R marching band receiving some scholarship money.
Great.
I just want to mention the Health Benefits Fair that Mrs. Hathaway conducted, um, I did stop in at that, and, uh, there were, uh, a number of, um, representatives from the various insurance companies, dental insurance and, and, um, uh, disability insurance, things like that, and there were people picking up brochures, and they found that interesting, um, so that was, that was another event, so thank you, uh, Mrs. Hathaway for, uh, putting that on for us, and we also had the harassment training program that was put on, on, uh, the thirtieth, and that was very well attended.
Yep, I think most employees attended.
They did, I'm very pleased that everyone, uh, made it happen, there were some, um, that just, like, call firefighters who have other obligations during the day, so we are looking at having a nighttime session to accommodate for them, um, and that will be sometime in June.
I just want to say one more time, everyone's sick of hearing this, if anyone knows anyone who is interested in the Nat Crane House, it's still standing, it's still available, and if anyone has any hope of doing anything with it, it would be nice to take it down and move it, because it is gonna be demolished, so.
Under acknowledgements, the, uh, Primetime received a, a donation of thirty dollars. Also, we want to note that the, uh, we had five firefighters participate in the fight for air climb at the Omni Hotel in Providence, uh, those five members are Chief McGee, uh, Deputy Stephen Potts, Lieutenant Christopher Ready, firefighter, paramedic John Gothier, and firefighter E M T, Zachary Smoos. This, uh, they raised over three, I believe they raised three hundred dollars, total, they raised a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, all the participants, this is climbing twenty-two flights, uh, it's for a, uh, good cause, Lung Association, and we appreciate the, uh, hard work that they did, I can't imagine running up twenty-two flights of stairs, so we appreciate.
I'm winded twenty-two steps in any direction, so congratulations.
Yeah, I was crawling out of the subway today with my shoulder bag.
So it's a great feat that they, they accomplished, and we're very, uh, proud of them.
Thank you, gentlemen, we are very proud.
Uh, I just want to mention, I got my first mailing today, August the third and fourth is the P M C, Pan-Mass Challenge Jimmy Fund, the bike ride that always comes through town, so that's, they'll be in Dayton August the third.
And the last, uh, thing for acknowledgements, we received a letter, good morning, yesterday morning, my son and I were outside playing with Dayton's Highway Department while Dayton's Highway Department cleaned out the catch basins on Elm Street and Tony's Way, I just wanted to take a second to write and say a big thank you to Ray, who drove the truck and operated the claw, he was so kind to my son and I, and we just really appreciated it, my son is three and loves all trucks and big equipment, Ray let us watch the truck clean out one of the catch basins, and then proceeded to talk to my son and I for several minutes, he was just so friendly and pleasant, my son was so happy, I'm sure it seems like a small thing, but I wanted to write to make sure you guys know, know, we appreciate all you do, providing positive feedback may be much less common than negative feedback, and want to make sure you know you, you're appreciated. Ray didn't provide his last name, so I'm hoping it's clear what I'm referring to, uh, please pass along my gratitude, this is Ray Rose, uh, we, uh, appreciate this, we too often hear, uh, negative comments, it's, it's really nice to hear, uh, somebody who appreciates the employees in this town, so I'm very happy and pleased.
Besides that, of course.
Yes.
I actually got to see this last year when we were meeting in North Dayton about the drainage easement we were going to get from the mill, and he was out there cleaning, and I actually got to see him use that and what came out of there, interesting.
We don't want to know.
It's like worse than a drain at home, you know.
Do you need the, did we vote on the thirty dollars?
We did not, but we are supposed to vote on that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we acknowledge the donation of thirty dollars to the Primetime, get some donations to town.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, objections, the ayes have it. We have no minutes to approve, approval of the warrants.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved, forty-three A dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-five thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars eighty-three cents payroll, warrant forty-three B dash nineteen in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars fifty-one cents, and warrant forty-three C dash nineteen in the amount of eighty-four thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars forty-five cents, the last two being accounts payable, all dated April twenty-fourth be approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant forty-four A dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-two thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars twenty-nine cents payroll, warrant forty-four B dash nineteen in the amount of a hundred ninety-four thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars seventy-six cents, accounts payable, both dated. Accounts payable, both dated May the first, be approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, objections, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant forty-five A dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-two thousand, three hundred nine dollars, eighty-six cents payroll. Forty-five B dash nineteen in the amount of a hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and eighteen cents. That's accounts payable. Uh, warrant forty-five C dash nineteen in the amount of two thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars, fifty cents in excise refunds. And brace yourself, warrant forty-five D dash nineteen in the amount of two million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents. The D R assessment, all dated, uh, May the eighth, be approved.
Second.
All those, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, objections, the ayes have it. Public input, I guess our public has left. I just want to say that our next meeting is May fifteenth at six o'clock.
Special meeting. Schedule for the other meetings is still the same.
So I'm accepting motions to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Thank you, Cable, good night.
Good weekend, everybody.
Thank you, Cable.